We're good. Okay. Good evening. This is the meeting of the Riverside Township District 208 Board of Education. Can we have a call to order, Pledge of Allegiance?
I part allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, could a roll call please?
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
I gotta dial in Ms. Smetana here, real quick. She's gonna participate via phone tonight.
Okay, thank you. We do have recognitions, and I know we do have visitor statements this evening, so we'll do recognitions first, and then move to visitor statements.
I think I know this number off the top.
Ms. Lindquist, are we ready for recognitions at this point? Okay.
Hello?
Dr. Smetana, you there?
Hi, I am.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Good evening, thank you. And Ms. Lindquist is here on behalf of Dr. Freitas this evening. Thank you for joining us. Would you wanna start us out with recognitions?
Thank you. Do I see Coach Curtin? Yeah. Coach Curtin's gonna join me-
Oh, okay, thank you.
-for recognitions for the students first, and then I'll follow up with staff recognition after that.
Good evening, everyone. Several recognitions tonight. The first student athlete that we're gonna recognize, I know she's not here tonight, she's out of town with her family, but I think it is appropriate to recognize her, Bryce Pacoric. Bryce Pacoric made it downstate, girls' track and field in the 800-meter run. Bryce ended her outstanding athletic career with another standout season on the track and field team. Some individual highlights for Bryce include first-place finishes in the mile at the Bulldog Relays, first-place finish at the Lyden Invite, and second-place finishes in the 800-meter at the MSC Blue Division Meet and Sectional Meet to earn a return trip to the IHSA Class 3A State Meet, where she finished 20th out of 35 runners with her career best time, 2 minutes 19.28 seconds. Bryce was also the anchor for the 4x400 and the 4x800 team that earned all-conference honors as well. Additionally, Bryce was named honorable mention, excuse me, to the IHSA Academic All-State Team. Bryce graduates as one of the most successful runners in her time at RB and will be missed by many. Congratulations Bryce Pacoric, and congratulations Coach Ian Robbins. Next, Brady Norman. I don't know if Brady's with us tonight. Some of the boys are making their way in right now.
Yeah, why don't you come on, maybe right over there?
Yeah. Again, Brady Norman. Brady Norman is a member of the class of 2025. He earned a spot in the IHSA Class 3A State Track Meet and the 3200-meter run. Brady set a new RBHS sophomore record this season by running a 9-minute 35.26 second in the 3200. His time shattered the previous record by nearly 8 seconds. Congratulations on a great season, Brady, and we look forward to watching you continue to develop your running skills in the year to come. Congratulations, Brady Norman. Next, with the following athletes, please stand forward. Zach Gaynor, Hayden Mars, William Callis, Jack O'Brien, Brennan Lester, Evan McMullin, Asa Cale, Luke Burnt, William Sessler, and Henry Walker. These athletes make up our boys' track relay teams for the 4x400 and the 4x800. Both of the 4x4 and the 4x8 relay teams advanced to the IHSA Class 3A State Track Meet this past month. The 4x4 team comprising Hayden Mars, William Callis, Zach Gaynor, and Jack O'Brien just missed breaking a 40-year-old RB track record by fractions of a second and posting a time of 3 minutes 24.93 seconds. This group of boys went on to earn a 25th-place finish in the IHSA State Prelimaries with a time of 3:27.98. As three members of this relay team look to return next year, we look forward to watching them continue to improve and take another run at the RB Record Board. Congratulations on an incredible season for the 4x4 relay team. The 4x800 team comprising Evan McMullin, Hayden Mars, Brennan Lester, and Jack O'Brien ran a time of 801.73 at the IHSA Class 3A State Meet, earning them a 24th-place finish in the preliminary rounds. The 4x8 relay team will look forward to the opportunity to build on their success this past season, as each student athlete is a member of the class of 2024 and will return to the program next year. It is also worth mentioning that each athlete that participated in both relay teams this past spring, along with their teammate Brady Norman, played a critical role in RB's first-ever state championship for a team and earning the title in the 2022 Class 2A Boys Cross-Country State Championship. Congratulations on an incredible year, boys, and we wish you all the best in the future. I would also like to congratulate Coach Weisar. Way to go, Coach Weisar, and Coach Brady. Taking a quick picture, coaches, if you wanna jump in. Take a quick picture.
Anybody on the board, wanna take a picture?
Madam President.
Board President? Hold on, let's the Board President jump in there.
Let's try to close in just a little bit, so I don't see the gaps. Perfect. Everybody shift this way, a little bit. President Zales, this way, this way, this way, keep going, keep going. Perfect. I'm gonna take one out. I'm gonna take one in.
Nice job, gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our All-State Qualifier recognitions. We are still waiting on the release of the baseball All-State Team, fingers crossed.
Okay, thank you, all of you.
Pictures?
Thank you, my friend. Let me go up there.
Kylie, you're up.
Or I can go here, or up there?
You can go up there, yeah, sure.
Okay. Really stretching it tonight, it hurts.
If you're gonna be the sub tonight, you gotta give it the full experience.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, thank you so much. So I am here tonight on behalf of Principal Freitas, who couldn't be here, and it is my great pleasure to have the opportunity, in his absence, to recognize Mr. Gary Prokes, who is our TV production teacher, who I thought I saw-
Sitting in a cross.
Yes, perfect. Dr. Freitas wrote a little something. "Mr. Gary Prokes is a 30-plus-year veteran of the RB teaching staff and is being recognized this evening for his outstanding contribution to the field of education and value-added to RB. Mr. Prokes is part of the first cohort of educators in the state of Illinois to have students earn a college and career pathway endorsement in arts and communications, specifically in radio and TV broadcasting. Because of Mr. Prokes' tireless efforts, students that take his courses are eligible for dual credit, have an individualized college and career plan, experience team-based challenges, and gain real-world experiences through the co-production of board meetings and major school events." Dr. Freitas asked me to touch a little bit on what that college and career pathway endorsement is and what it means. Under the Workforce Readiness Act, ISB has enacted a way for schools to recognize students who earn college and career pathway endorsements in a variety of different areas. And the mandate from the Illinois State Board of Education was that every school in the state of Illinois have at least one career pathway established by 2027. And so when our partners at Triton through the Disciplines Valley Region came to see us and start talking about what we already have going for us at RB, we very quickly found that Mr. Prokes was going to be able to offer us our first college and career pathway endorsement because of his dual-credit partnership with the College of DuPage, because of the team-based challenges that our students in RBTV do, making packages and submitting for awards, which typically they win all of the time, all of the awards, as well as the work-based learning experiences that students get for being here during Board of Education meetings and helping to livestream our Board of Education. In kind of a flurry, as things in Illinois happen, things are swirling around, and we think we might have an endorsement, and then all of a sudden, yes, we do, and it's Gary. And it's no surprise that it's Gary because of his tireless efforts for RBTV. I can personally say that it's one of my favorite things about working at RB, because it's the only place where no one tells me to hurry up when I have a microphone. Mr. Prokes just lets me keep talking. So it is my great honor and privilege to recognize my friend and my colleague, Mr. Gary Prokes.
A pause for a picture and get the TV camera behind you.
Bob, you need a picture with the TV camera behind him.
Give it to her, Gary. Thought he was on the run there. Does that conclude?
Yes, that concludes the staff recognitions.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to visitor comments. I know we have some this evening. I'm gonna read a statement. Do we do a sign-in sheet at the front?
We do.
So, okay, if you wanna, if the first person wants to come on up, I'm gonna read the statement while we're getting ready to hear from the public. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the Board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent."
So with the three minutes at 2:30, I usually put my hand up if you, okay?
Thank you.
My name is Maggie White. I have a son who's a Rising Junior. I am also secretary on the Board of the Music and Theater Sponsors. So I'm just gonna run through a handful of points from a statement that I sent, emailed last night. So basically, RBHS Music and Theater Sponsors is an organization of parents and community members who support our student musicians, performers, and production crew. Our mission is to encourage and maintain an enthusiastic interest in all phases of RBHS music, theater, and theater production programs, consistent with the mission of Riverside Brookfield High School. And so the great news is, we feel our mission statements align, especially the BOE mission statement, this part that talks about a partnership of students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community committed to educational excellence, innovation, and equity. We deliver a rigorous and well-balanced education for the academic, artistic, athletic, social, emotional, and civic growth of each student. So to that end, as you know, and we've stated, our goal is that, and our belief, is that the RB Music Department should be staffed by three full-time music teachers. And our goal is to collaborate with the BOE, administration, and theater schools to make this a reality. Another point is, we do have three gifted music teachers in James Baum, Matthew Loeb, and Kaylee Smetana. We feel retention of all three teachers is vitally important. We've, you know, spoken about Ms. Smetana in the past, but we do feel that all three teachers are a gift to the school, and retention is very important to us. Another point is, while music enrollment has declined for this coming school year, as we know, music enrollment in the theater schools is rising sharply. You've seen, we've all seen various statistics, but just, you know, incoming enrollment for sixth graders is increasing by 250% in District 96. District 95 numbers are going up 100 and 150% for these incoming sixth and seventh graders. These will all feed into RB within the next couple of years. Band enrollment in District 96 has expanded, so lots of, you know, we can expect a big influx of music students into our program. Which leads us to another thing that we feel is that the enrollment benchmark of 40 students per music class is arbitrary, as it's been explained to us. It's not based on any best-known practice that we've researched. In fact, in some ensembles, a size of 16, 12, you know, for a jazz band and for a madrigals is more appropriate. So we feel RB can have a more inclusive program with larger ensembles, and can have more of an elite program for those musicians who want to study and be in smaller ensembles and really, you know, sort of perfect their craft.
Please close.
Okay. And I think... Yep. I think that's it.
I was sorry, I was trying to-
Hi, my name is Lisa Janounas, and I'm the president of the RBHS Music and Theater Sponsors. At the last board meeting, you heard a lot of emotional testimony from parents and students about how music education, and especially their teachers, have touched their lives. But tonight, I'm here to bring a different perspective. I'd like to talk about the District 208 Board goals through the lens of music education, and if the board members are doing their due diligence at meeting these goals. Board Goal Number One: Explore how to maximize curricular days to foster academic rigor, new opportunities, and social-emotional support for all students. The one board action step that we highlighted to support this goal was to identify specific data points to be used to drive analysis affiliated and those not, blah, 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 with academic performance, growth, gaps, and SEL needs. Has the Board identified any data related to how music education and our music educators at RB affect academic performance? According to a University of Kansas study on the effects of music education on student achievement and positive outcomes, analysis shows that students engaged in music programs outperformed their peers on every indicator: grade-point average, graduation rate, ACT scores, attendance, and discipline referrals. Overall, the study demonstrated that the more a student participates in music, the more positive these benefits become. In fact, we consistently have music students that graduate in the top 10% of their class and go on to top-tier universities. At least three this year are studying music education. When it comes to social-emotional learning, here's a quote from that same study. "One of the key findings that shouldn't get lost is how important music is for creating a sense of belonging and purpose for students who participate. They identify themselves as musicians, as being in the band or chorus, and they're motivated to come to school so that they can participate in music. The students also believe that music participation teaches them skills like discipline and concentration, so they can use that to their benefit throughout the school day." So in conclusion, to that board goal, reducing staff in the music department and the subsequent cancellation of available music classes doesn't align with that board goal. Okay, so I'm already see that I've had, I've got a longer, I will go on to read one more, and then I can-
You can submit it in writing if you want to via email.
Board Goal Number Two is research opportunities and methods to increase two-way engagement with all stakeholders at the RBS, of the RBHS community. Identify key areas and categories of communication distributed by both the district and the high school, including academic communication and extracurricular communication. Has the Board taken steps to inform parents and the community when there are staffing concerns? I'm just gonna finish up this one, and then I'll cut it short. "We've established that the music parents did not receive timely, accurate information regarding the reduction of Ms. Smetana's role. The Board has told us that this is the teacher-leader's responsibility to inform parents about staffing reductions, but this doesn't seem fair or reasonable. A teacher shouldn't have to deliver distressing news that they have no control over. This should be the administration or the superintendent's role. It certainly is a gap in communication roles and should be addressed. When was the last time the community heard directly from the district? Silence from the district is not two-way engagement with all stakeholders in the community."
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liz Bushio. You've seen me a few times up here talking about music. I have two daughters who graduated from RB, both in madrigals, and my son Ben is in madrigals next year. Music's really, really important to my family and singing to my kids. I said everything I had to say. Three teachers, choir teach choir, orchestra teach orchestra, band teach band. I know you guys have that message. A couple of things I just wanna say. Many of you were at the graduation ceremony last month, and you heard the band play, and you heard the choir sing, and you saw Mr. Loeb on the piano while Ms. Smetana was leading the choir. They were all phenomenal, and it can't be done. That kind of music can't be put together without three full-time teachers putting in the time during school, with rehearsals with the kids, and then the actual performance itself. It's not just the performance time, it's all the work that goes up to making that performance happen, with the kids and the students. So, three teachers, please, please, please. And then, the last thing I wanna say, I sent a letter last year, and at the end of the letter, I added a quote by Plato. And I just wanna say that quote one more time. And Plato says, "I would teach children music, physics, and philosophy, but most importantly, music. For the patterns in music and all the arts are the keys to learning."
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Stephanie O'Brien. I'm a Rising Senior, Kaitlin. And I'm speaking completely from the heart. Kaitlin is an amazing kid. You meet her, she's, she's great. What she has a problem with is communication, receptive and productive communication. She also has a slew of learning disabilities, I could go through them, and medical issues that she's dealt with throughout her life. She's been supported incredibly throughout D96 and RB. She can, she has a very difficult time making connections and holding connections and being a part of something. She's never been bullied, that I know of, she tells me she isn't, but she has been left out all of her life, except for the culture created in the music department here at RB, largely because of Ms. Smetana. Whereas Kaitlin was reticent to join anything, any kind of groups. She feels comfortable and proud to go and perform, to go to picnics, to go to field trips with the music department. That culture that she feels comfortable in doesn't just happen. It's created. It's created by gifted individuals. We have been so fortunate to have three gifted individuals. We did, our family moved to Colorado for a while. We came back to Riverside. And we were looking at Oak Park, and we were looking at La Grange, and the thing that drove us back here were our friends, but it was the educational opportunities that our children would have in grade school, junior high, and high school. A high school that knew that a well-rounded education, including the arts, was so important. In the performances, we see children who are going to perform academically, they're going to perform, you know, in sports and in music. The ones that have problems in those areas, or in the other two areas, you can't imagine how much it does for them. Ms. Smetana needs to stay for those who can't fit any other, you know, have a difficult time fitting any other way. It is education of the most precious kind. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Patrick Williams. My daughter Iris is going to be a sophomore next year at RB. Tonight, I'm here to advocate for a change that will not only benefit our high school students, but will also shape them into well-rounded citizens who are prepared for the future. At our last meeting, as you know, you heard dozens of us speak for the need for three full-time music teachers at RB. In addition, I firmly believe that high school students should have the opportunity to participate in elective classes rather than being assigned up to two study halls per day. Electives, particularly those in the fine arts, play a crucial role in the development of our students and offer a pathway to success in a rapidly changing world. First and foremost, elective classes such as music are essential for creating well-rounded citizens. These classes foster creativity, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills which are vital for success in any field. They encourage students to think outside the box, express themselves, and embrace their individuality. By engaging in the fine arts, students learn to appreciate diverse perspectives, cultures, historical context, fostering empathy and understanding. Something you would know, if you had studied this, you might understand why a jazz band can't have 40 people in it. Moreover, the fine arts electives offer valuable opportunities for personal growth and self-discovery. Students who participate in music or drama classes learn teamwork, collaboration, and effective communication skills. They develop the ability to work together towards a common goal, overcoming challenges and celebrating achievements as a group. These skills are not only applicable to the arts, but are also to various aspects of life, including future careers and relationships. Speaking of careers, we cannot overlook the transformative role that electives can play in preparing our students for a future economy dominated by artificial intelligence. As AI continues to advance, many jobs will inevitably become automated, ones that we never thought were gonna be automated before. However, the one thing that sets human beings apart is their capacity for creativity and innovation. Elective classes provide an avenue for students to nurture and enhance their creative thinking and abilities. Through the arts, students develop unique perspectives, original ideas, and the ability to adapt in new situations. When routine tasks can become accomplished by machines, it is those skills cultivated through electives that will be highly sought after. Designing innovative solutions, crafting compelling narratives, and expressing emotions through art are skills that cannot be replicated by artificial intelligence. By investing in electives, i.e. making sure we have more than adequate staffing, three music teachers, we are equipping our students with the tools they need to thrive in a rapidly-evolving job market, where adaptability and creativity are paramount. In conclusion, offering elective classes to high school students rather than assigning study halls can have a transformative impact on their development and future prospects. By participating in the fine arts, students become well-rounded individuals with enhanced creativity, critical thinking, and communication skills. Furthermore, electives provide them with a competitive edge in the future economy dominated by artificial intelligence. Let us empower our students, nurture their talents, and prepare them for a world where their unique abilities will make a difference. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Elijah M. Pietrow. I am a Rising sophomore, so I was a freshman this year at RB. So, as you know, there's one choir for the freshman class, which is Chamber Choir, right? I was debating on doing it coming into freshman year, you know? It's like, oh, choir, you know? But I went to some type of orientation here, and the boo- I had more than most people opportunities in getting to know Ms. Montana when she was my softball coach as well. So, I think to lose her as a teacher, it would just, it'd be a shame for all the eighth graders, the seventh graders, anyone, you know? And then, there's Mr. Loeb. He's got two children at home. And to teach band, orchestra, and choir, it is a task that most people just can't handle. So, as everyone here has been saying, I think there should be three full-time jobs, and I'm, I just, I really want to see it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay if I stand, I'm having some back issues. I'm better to sit in a cushion chair, you're not going to reel me out of here. My name is Brian Conroy. I'd like to start with a couple of quotes. One, "We love you, we care about you, we have your back." I contribute that to RB administration. I have another quote here. "I had the absolute fattest crush on Kira Conroy throughout middle school till she got fat. P.S., so did every dude from Gross, so I'm not the only one." This is a social media post my daughter woke up to on her graduation day. However, it was not someone's Instagram page or obscure Facebook account. It was posted on the Twitter page that night, it was posted on the Twitter page hashtag "Last Night as an RB Senior Confessions," a site that has become as much a part of graduation week as walking the stage to receive a diploma. That tweet received 1,600 views, half a dozen likes, basically the entire student population saw that tweet. While some posts on this site are innocuous and lighthearted or self-effacing or talk about who threw up where at whose party, others are vile repugnant attacks on fellow students meant to do harm and humiliate. Some students, as in the case with my daughter's instance, use their real names. While we can't be 100% positive of that, but based on subsequent tweets, it was from the same individual, it's very obvious that he did. Others are anonymous profiles, while yet other profiles are set up to appear as though they are coming from another student. What's just as troubling is the content of these posts is the fact that RB administration is well aware of this tradition. They know exactly when these posts will show up, the night before graduation, and have even implored students to participate in to be good digital citizens, yet they've done nothing. An hour before the ceremony, my daughter showed us the tweet and told us she was not going. My wife was bawling, I'm sorry, my daughter was bawling, my wife was devastated, I was infuriated. I immediately went to the school, showed the tweet to the dean and Dr. Freitas, and asked that they take action. Dr. Freitas said there would have to be an investigation and that anyone can create a Twitter account. I asked him, "Have you asked him if he did it?" He said, "He could just deny it." I said, "Can you at least ask the question?" To which he repeated, "He could just deny it." Dr. Freitas did nothing. Not only did he not ask the question, he embraced the individual involved when he walked across the stage and received his diploma, and in so doing, enabled him. Enabled him before all his peers and gave him the green light to all those that follow to continue with the humiliation and denigration of their peers. Despite all of the administrators we have working in our one school district with our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, and principal, almost half a dozen assistant principals, our deans, our counselors, our social workers, and even a school safety officer, you know how many reached out to Twitter to try to have that site taken down? Zero. It's the same number of administrators that reached out to my daughter to see if she was okay. The health, safety, and well-being of our children should be the primary responsibility of every employee in this building. The mentality that their responsibility ends at the school lot line is not only outdated but is wrong. By turning a blind eye to cyberbullying and harassment, this administration has demonstrated a willful disregard for their students that I believe constitutes negligence, and there is culpability here beyond the individual making the post. Some of the tweets posted this site are far more hateful and destructive than what was posted about my daughter. She is not the only one not to walk as a result of this site. What happens when the wrong thing is said about the wrong person at the wrong time, and they decide they're going to make it right on the one day they have left to do so? What will be the school's liability then? I often tell my children that there are two types of people, those that let things happen and those that make things happen. The administration has demonstrated that they're willing to let this happen. Nothing happened as a result of this. I'm employing the board to make things happen. You have a problem here. It's time to get in the weeds a bit and shake things up. Less showmanship, less empty rhetoric, less fake empathy, and more action on our children's mental health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kira Conroy. I recently finished my senior year at RB, and I thought I would start off by reading some statistics for the board. According to a study by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide is the second leading cause of death among adolescents between 10 and 24 years old. Furthermore, research has shown that cyberbullying increased the risk of depression, anxiety, and suicidal thoughts in teenagers. The negative body image perpetuated by cyberbullying incidents that focus on appearance, such as calling someone fat, can contribute to the development of disordered eating patterns and a distorted self-perception. I'm grateful for being in a place in my own mental health journey where my response to such a hurtful statement is to advocate for the school to do better, while hopefully preventing future students from experiencing what I have. There was a time in my life where I am not so sure I would have reacted or coped in the same healthy way, and my hope is that by voicing my experience today, we can prevent future students from experiencing the detrimental impacts that cyberbullying can have. Senior confessions is not an isolated incident, nor is this something that has only occurred amongst my class. Senior confessions have become a yearly tradition that essentially condones cyberbullying. The things that have been said during senior confessions have negatively affected and will continue to negatively affect students at RB until something is done. I'm disappointed that even after the tweet was brought to the principal's attention, there was no disciplinary actions nor additional support offered. For the last four years, Dr. Freitas has preached that, "We love you, we care for you, and we have your back." Unfortunately, in this situation, I felt none of those things. Why does this situation go unaddressed when a few months ago, someone threatened to bring a gun to a pep rally and action was taken immediately? It is situations like this that lead someone to feeling so alone, hurt, and unsupported that they turn to such drastic things such as causing harm to themselves and/or others. It's disheartening that in this case, the individual who made the statement was not questioned despite having his name attached to the comment. The fact that someone can openly bully and verbally attack another student without any repercussions from the school leads students to believe that this behavior is not only accepted but allowed. At the end of the day, I lost respect for the administration and the relationships I thought I had with my superiors. More than anything, it makes me sad and disappointed that this was how my four years at RB came to a close. So, do better, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment this evening? Please.
Hello. My name is Angela Russo, and I'm just another parent and another voice here to support the choir at RB and the music department. And I'm especially here as a voice to support my daughter, Victoria, and that had the audacity, audacity to choose a career in music. And I really support her dream, and we have the responsibility, I as parent, and you as board, and I talk also to the community that eventually we listen to this, we have the responsibility to help these kids to pursue their happiness, to pursue their future, to help the community. Because this music and what these kids have been doing is part of our community. There is no graduation without the band. There is no football games without the cheering. And there is no Fdo July celebration without those kids. They do all this just out of their passion and out of their love for music. I am from another country, as you can see from my accent, I'm Italian, and this country gave me a lot of opportunity personally to achieve my career goals and to be happy. And I hope that this will be the case also for my daughter. We have the responsibility to give music a future, because it is really important, and we all know, in all moment in our lives, beside all the contribution that those kids give to the community, all the musicians do. There is no wedding without music, there is no funeral without the music that gives the support to all the people that are there. There is no human without music. So, we have the responsibility to make it happen and to give these kids the preparation that they need to be out there and pursue their career and their happiness. Thank you so much.
So, for those who are watching from home or public comment, we do have a brief report later on in the agenda regarding music enrollment and staffing. You're welcome to stay, or again, watch from the YouTube version.
Are there any additional public comment for this evening? I don't see any. Okay. Yes.
Hi, my name's Matt Brennan. I have a rising sophomore, I'm sure is terrified right now, and sixth grader, and I'm going to talk about both of them for a second here, because she's going to be here in a few years. I've also been working in professional theater since 1994. I've seen the level of production you have. You won't get that with two teachers, period. It's not possible. That's one thing. The other thing I'll say really quickly, really simply, is I'm worried about not so much the fact that having the one teacher, you cut one more teacher, you're basically spreading the other ones too thin. That's going to have a very negative effect on my sophomore who's coming in. But, the last thing I'll say is, my sixth grader wants to come here and do choir because of the middle school program that you had where she interacted with Ms. Montana. You have no idea how much this affects students. It goes way beyond what they're learning in music. There are kids that I guarantee are in the music program here who would not be succeeding outside of the music program if they weren't in the music program here. It has an effect way beyond what they do in those specific classes. I'll keep it short, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we look around one more time? No additional comment? We will move on to the business on the agenda for the evening. For discussion, we have FOIA requests, Dr. Skinkis.
Six FOIA requests. The responses are included in the board members' packets. Directory information from United States Navy. Again, that one had to be resubmitted because it's important. You know, we have an obligation as a school, if a parent checks off that registration, that they do not want to be contacted by the armed services. So, it's important that the request is specific to ask for all those students who did not opt out. So, that's why you see two communications there. There was a request to know all the names of the members of the Equity Committee. There was a request for copies of records and transactions invoice, et cetera, with any correspondence with Lori's Children's Hospital. There was a smart procure, which we usually get on a regular basis, looking for purchase orders, purchase dates, et cetera. There was a request from Mr. Conroy asking for any communications from the administration to the students in regards to senior confessions. And there was another request on the record of the board's votes on IASB resolutions over the last five years. And those are the FOIA requests submitted for the June 13th meeting, excuse me.
Any questions or comments from anyone?
My only comment on that last one for the IASB, that's public record. I didn't see in our reply back to them to direct that person to go to IASB and ask for the report.
Well, they were looking, as I read it, they were looking for this board's, which we do as a thumbs up, thumbs down.
Yeah, as a discussion, right.
Right, right. We do as a discussion. So, that's how I think the FOIA was directed to our district. And this is, he's a U of C professor that's doing a lot of work.
That's why I saw you see it, I thought if he wants to know, he could have got records of that delegate discussion.
I think he's trying to get down to the individual district level. Do we have an update on the district goals for this evening?
We do. So, there's one page in there, the board, so as you see the.
One page you're reading, I apologize.
Thirty-seven on this board book.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, can you increase the font on there, please? And David, maybe help her fit, does that go into the whole screen, or?
It's the biggest you're going to get.
Okay. So, we have the SMART goal on the panorama, so that's been updated, so that next step is career readiness for all students. Also used for post-secondary planning and identify students who would benefit from diverse cultural or curricular learning opportunities based on their data, and then there's four action steps. Create and implement a new position to address public relations, community engagement. Implement an action plan, steps for each strand of the Equity Action Plan in order to begin working toward the goals established by the Delt, which the board heard from in April. Conduct an analysis of budget expenditures to ensure resources are committed to the programs directly affecting student outcomes for the June 30th. Expenditures are at or below the board-approved budget. And then, we put a hold on the last group. You know, there's always still some, there's still some minor ongoing conversations with the zoo and the field next door. So, before we establish a committee, I want to make sure that there's no room for growth with those conversations. So, I should be able to update that hopefully in the next couple of months. I did not receive any initial comments or questions from board members on these draft of goals, so I'll leave them as a draft again for July, and then if there's no additional comments or questions, the board could take the next couple of weeks to review them, and then we can approve them in July.
I think that would be appropriate to have them aligned for the 23-24 school year. That's the goal here, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Any additional questions right now, or we'll take the next month before our next meeting, additional questions and comments on this document? Any additional discussion items from members of the board? For the agenda, looking, looking. Moving on to reports, there's no president's report, superintendent's report, Dr. Skinkis.
The replacement for the cafeteria and library HVAC unit started this week. Parents, please remind your students walking to RB for a summer camp or an event to use a crosswalk to cross Gulf Road, then walk north along the football field, I feel like a flight attendant, moving my hands, the football field to access the crosswalk by Door A, to then cross and to get in the building. This will prevent students from walking in any pickup or drop-off traffic. We have seen students, you know, if you saw out there, the construction fence has a big portion of that sidewalk closed off, and we've seen students in the morning just walking in between cars while the parents are doing pickups and drop-offs, that come into Door A, and that's really not safe. And so, we really like them to cross and then come down along the field and cross where we have the two lit-up cross signs, and they can come into Door A through that if they take that path. That will also help them if they're on bikes as well. They updated the district goals, progress monitoring document, which we just reviewed. There was only one advisory council, that was the facilities they met last Thursday, June 8th, to review summer projects, the facility rental agreement, future projects, and Air Mark's quarterly report. And that wraps up the superintendent's report for the June 13th board meeting.
Thank you. And then, we have the assistant superintendent's report. How do we want to handle that with Dr.?
Dr. Montana is going to present now, so the board is, I asked Dr. Montana to call in just so she can cover reports, she'll cover the budget tonight. This will be the last time that the board will have interaction with Dr. Montana until September, when she returns from her leave. So, I thought it was important, if there was any questions on the budget or any financial items, you could ask those tonight. So, Dr. Montana, do you want to start with your assistant superintendent report?
Yes, good evening. Tonight, I'll report out with financial information through the month of May, which represents 92% of the fiscal year. My report begins on board book page 41, is the monthly summary report. The total operating revenue for the month was $985,824, with 25% coming from CPPRT, 24% coming from evidence-based funding or state funding, and 24% coming from local fees, which primarily this month was summer camp registration and driver's education fees. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,167,970, with 79% towards salary and benefits, 8% for purchased services, which primarily was food service and township treasurer fees, as well as some technology purchases, and 5% for transportation. On the next page, you'll find the monthly financial statements. You'll see the summary of revenues shows that the district has received 97.4% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is lower than this time for the last
items, you could ask those tonight. So, Dr. Smetana, do you want to start with your assistant superintendent report?
Yes. Good evening. Tonight, I'll report out with financial information through the month of May, which represents 92% of the fiscal year. My report begins on board book page 41 is the monthly summary report. The total operating revenue for the month was $985,824, with 25% coming from CPPRT, 24% coming from evidence-based funding or state funding, and 24% coming from local fees, which primarily this month was summer camp registration and driver's education fees. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,167,970, with 79% towards salary and benefits, 8% for purchased services, which primarily was food service and township treasurer fees, as well as some technology purchases, and 5% for transportation. On the next page, you'll find the monthly financial statements. You'll see the summary of revenues shows that the district has received 97.4% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is lower than this time for the last two fiscal years, was over 100% in fiscal year '22 and 106% in fiscal year '21. And the reason for this is, to date, the district has only received 96.3% of budgeted property tax, and that includes both fall and spring collections. So, in the operating funds, we're chasing $898,956, and most of that comes from the education fund. And the reason that we're still chasing so much money in property tax is due to the delay in both the fall and the spring collections, which was a result of Cook County switching over to a new property tax system. I did anticipate we would receive some of this money in May, but as I touched on previously, we actually didn't receive any money from property tax this month in May, only CPPRT. Cook County has a disbursement schedule published for school districts to look at, and that only went through April. But we do still anticipate hopefully receiving some additional property tax in June.
Can I ask a quick question, Dr. Smetana? Can you hear me okay? Is the majority of that from the spring collection or you indicated it was both from December and the next installment?
We have not gotten 100% of what we budgeted from the fall, but a majority of the money we're chasing is from the spring collection.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Thanks.
I have a quick question also. So, our year ends June 30th, our fiscal year. So, what happens to the budget if the money comes in after the 30th? Do they retroactively apply it to this year or does this year end up with a shortage and next year end up with kind of an artificial surplus?
The latter. So, in a cruel, in a cruel base accounting, it will be adjusted in the journals from the auditor to this year's budget. But from the treasurer's office, which we operate on a cash basis, it will look like we have a surplus of cash for this year.
Yeah, a deficit this year.
Deficit for the upcoming, for upcoming June, July 1 year.
So, next year may look like we have more money.
Correct.
But really, that was money that we should have had this year.
This happened a few years ago when the township treasurer's office, because of the Fourth of July holiday and the end of the fiscal year, did not, the way it fell, it was on a long weekend, and so it did not get credited until after July 1. So, then we had like additional $600,000 for the upcoming fiscal year instead of being on the previous year. Kristen, anything to add to that?
No, that's all, that's all accurate. And like I said, in talking to the township treasurer, he does believe we'll be able to get some of that money in June, but that's his best guess because Cook County hasn't released any additional information. Other questions or can I move on?
I'm looking quickly. Any other questions on the current financials? No, I think you can move on. Thank you.
Okay. And then lastly, the summary of expenditures shows that we spent 89.4% of the budgeted expenditures for the year, and this amount is pretty similar to a typical year for us. As always in my report, I included a statement of revenue and expenditures for the board accounts for the month of May as well as the student activity accounts. I also have several informational items tonight that I'd like to share with you. The first begins on board book page 60, which is our annual wellness report. The RBHS Wellness Committee was formed to meet the requirements set forth in Board Policy 6:50, which complies with a public act that promotes student wellness, good nutrition, and physical activity. As the instructional coach for wellness, James Baum ran the committee, and the committee works by soliciting volunteers. We always make sure we have student representation, teachers, administration, parents, and a community liaison. But it's up to the person running the committee to solicit those volunteers each year. I won't read the entire report to you, but I do want to highlight quickly a few things. First, we offered our wellness screening, as we do on an annual basis, to faculty and staff, which includes the flu shot if staff would like to do so. And that was on September 22nd, and we had 94 people participate. And while this was the first step to earning the wellness incentive through our insurance, it was really the totality of activities on this report that allowed us to meet the EBC Tier 1 and Tier 2 wellness incentives for the first year in a row, earning a quarter of the insurance, a quarter of a percent of the insurance premium for the district. So, that was a huge success again this year. In regards to food service, Quest Foods is our food provider. And Quest will be switching electronic payment systems to mealtime for the upcoming school year. This program will be more user-friendly for students and parents, and it will allow for instant deposits on the student account and automatic syncing with the student information system. So, this is a huge improvement because right now, there's a lag. And so, if a parent puts money on a student's account at 10:00 a.m., it likely is not there right now for lunchtime. And so, this will be instantaneous. And so, this is a huge improvement for the operation of the cafeteria. And then also on May 10, Quest held the food tasting after school. They received input from 16 students, and the input was to drive future menu items and procedures in the cafeteria, but primarily the tasting focused on items that would be serving in the new coffee bar that will be installed over the summer and ready for the fall for students to access before school, during lunch periods, and after school. And that will be built inside the cafeteria. And then lastly, on the wellness committee side, we had several teachers volunteer to teach enrichment activities on our February 17th institute day to promote staff wellness. And then per the request of the board, they also reviewed the vending machine selections. And the committee believes that the patrons of our vending machines appear to have good options to make healthy choices for their snacking needs if they still need. But they were concerned about the existing vending machine gate, which has been brought up in the past because there are some slats and students stick their hands in throughout the day. Not that that's encouraged, but students try to do that since the vending machines are closed. And so, we are exploring getting a new vending machine gate. It is, I did put it in the upcoming budget for fiscal year '24. It's approximately $11,000 to $13,000, but I did put it in the budget so we could address that next fiscal year. Moving on to the facilities advisory council. As Dr. Skinkis said earlier, we met on June 8th to discuss the quarterly business review from Airmark. I've included that in the board packet so you can review it on your own. It's a very comprehensive report outlining what services Airmark provides and specifically what they provided this last quarter. They do a phenomenal job day in and day out, and I wanted to also publicly thank them for all they do. Also at the facility advisory council, the administration is working with the district's architect to explore creating a commercial kitchen. And we discussed this both at the facility advisory council as well as the finance advisory council. And this commercial kitchen would allow students to earn dual credit in advanced food classes, which we currently cannot offer because while we have the staff certified to do so, our facility doesn't meet the requirements that are necessary. And we would primarily fund this during the '24-'25 school year when the district will have some additional revenue due to some bonds that are maturing. So, we're in the initial phases of exploring this with our architect, but I wanted to bring it to the attention of the entire board.
I would just add quickly. I think Airmark does a fabulous job. No, I was just making a comment about Airmark. I think this facility looks wonderful, which I know you guys talked about at the council meeting. But I think, I speak on behalf of the board. If you could pass that back, I think it's, the building is something to be proud of, certainly.
Well, I'll make a comment.
Absolutely. I will pass that along.
I think Ms. Ruska had a comment as well.
Ms. Ruska has a comment.
Just from the discussion we have with Airmark, how professional they are, they've had zero OSHA violations, zero like safety violations, I think, in the entire last year, which says a lot about the company that we hired to work in the grounds area here.
That's a, that's a really good point. Thank you.
Yeah, that's huge.
Debt profile, Kristen.
Board book page 87.
Eighty-seven.
The board had previously asked for a summary of the district's debt profile. So, we created this two-page document. The district currently has four bonds, all of which will come off the books by fiscal year '27. There's one bond that I highlighted that is eligible to be refinanced in 2026. The district should consider refinancing this bond at that time, which is from a previous referendum, in order to keep some debt on the books for the district. That's really important to keep some debt on the books for the district in order to ensure that the district has a healthy debt ceiling should they need to borrow money in the future. And likely, we will need to borrow some money in the future, as highlighted right underneath that, because the district will complete another required 10-year life safety study in 2024. And while we've addressed a lot of the major things that needed to be addressed, facility needs that needed to be addressed in the last 10-year study, like the majority of our roofs, there still will be some items that we will be required from the state to address. And likely, at that time, we will need to secure some additional life safety bonds for anything that's identified in the study.
So, I believe former board member Mike Welch worked quite a bit on this sheet as well with Ms. Locke. So, thank you. I think it's a, it's a helpful snapshot of where we are with our debt.
So, you'll see the bonds that will be coming off that are not, Kristen, what the 2017C bonds are the only ones that are, can be refinanced? So, there will be some bonds coming off the books in 2015. The 2015B bonds will be coming off, correct? And that is in?
Correct.
Twenty-five, right?
Twenty-twenty-five.
Correct.
Which is levy year '26, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the bonds that we're talking about refinancing, are they from the renovation or from the life safety?
The life safety bonds will all be coming off. The 2017C in year two, or 2027, which are eligible for refinancing in 2026, are still portion of the 2009 referendum bonds.
Six.
The 2006 referendum.
The 2006 referendum bonds come off.
I believe, I believe the reason why it says 2017C is because we had refunded these, or sorry, not refunded, we had refinanced these in 2017 as well.
Correct. The important thing about refinancing your debt is that you need to keep some debt as a public entity so that you can borrow against it in the future. So, while we would lower, with some of this coming off, the taxpayers should experience a tax break here in the next few years. But we still need to, would look to refinance them maybe in 2026 so that we have a debt limit.
Well, and the last time we refinanced, if you remember, we had gained because the interest was very good.
Right.
The interest dropped. So, that's what, I was a little curious. That may not be the.
We won't, we got two years.
The market's pretty different. Right, no, I think.
Right.
So, I think this is, just for next steps on this, this is for education purposes, and we would be talking to bond counsel in a 12-month timeframe, 16, 18-month timeframe? What do you forecast?
Probably not till next spring.
Okay.
When we begin those conversations, maybe not until fall of '24.
Okay.
Kristen, you want to touch on the last point, and then Ms. Lindquist and I could take over on that piece?
Yep. And then the last item that I've included in my report tonight is historical staffing and enrollment projections. So, as a follow-up to the previous board meeting, I've included two charts. One chart will break down music, historical staffing, and projected music enrollment. And the second chart provides projected and historical enrollment and staffing for all of the electives, which is applied arts, music, and visual arts. In my absence, I'll turn it over to Dr. Skinkis to explain the two charts in a little more detail.
Okay. So, Mary Ann, we need to shrink that a little bit. And then I also thought we had some copies of, there's some copies available. We could, you may have to share a little bit in the audience, but I felt that it would be easier if you had a copy to look at so you weren't turning your necks and having to, I don't know if we have enough.
This would also be available to download on our website, correct?
Yes. Ms. Nard usually posts the packet within 24 hours of the meeting. So, what, Ms. Lindquist helped prepare this. So, she'll do a primary, the primary introduction to these two charts. But I think it helps, it'll help explain some things. We understand, you know, some of the concerns that have been presented over the last two board meetings. We want to update the community a little bit on a few of these items so that we're all speaking on the same things. We do appreciate the passion of the community members and the students that have come before you, the board, the last two meetings. And so, this will just give you a little idea of like how, how we do staffing, how the staffing in the music's fluctuated. But it's been somewhat consistent. And we'll also, in the second chart, we'll be able to look, someone mentioned in their speech about electives, we'll give you an idea of kind of how some things have shifted in our electives, which may be causing some of the concerns that the music parents have discussed the last two meetings. So, Ms. Lindquist, why don't you start? I know the board will have questions throughout, so if you could just address those as we move forward, and then we'll go from there.
Yes, absolutely. So, the chart, the first chart, the music enrollment and staffing chart, various people, both on the Board of Education in the audience tonight, have seen different iterations of this chart. I've been working through this chart and kind of tweaking and updating information to make sure that we have the most accurate picture of what we're talking about. Since the last time we looked at this chart together, I made a couple of changes in an 18, 19, and 19, 20 school year after taking a look at what our teachers were specifically teaching in terms of FTE so that this music enrollment chart could be representative of course requests and FTE tied to those course requests for purely music electives, band, choir, orchestra. There are no fine arts survey numbers in here. There is no fine arts survey FTE included in this document. This document represents purely elective music courses, and any iterations of this document beforehand may not have. So, this is the most accurate information. This also includes an update from the last time we've looked at this chart, a more comprehensive look at the numbers that have been provided to us from our feeder districts in, for what their projections look like for the year '24, '25, and beyond in terms of what students we would be getting. So, when you look at this chart as a whole, just go over it again just to kind of refresh people's memory. At the very top, the table gives you every one of our elective music courses that exist and have run in the past on our books. We are looking at a five-year snapshot with a projection for next year as well, so a total of six years. What you see next to the list of courses in the first block of that chart at the top are student requests so that you can track, for example, a course like AP Music Theory and see what the student requests looked like from 2018, 19, and then looking at the projection for '23, '24. On the right side of that kind of thicker line in the middle of that top chart, you can see the number of sections that were assigned to those courses in each year for each course. So, that's sort of where the chart builds out. When we start to look below that original chart at the different color-coded charts below, what I've done is I've teased out from the main chart our total music enrollment and our total music FTE, which are the bookend charts, the orange and the yellow at the bottom. And then smushed in the middle of those two charts, you have enrollment for choir, band, and orchestra. When you look at, from left to right, in the color-coded area at the bottom, you are seeing the number of students that were enrolled, both in total music courses and then teased out for the three different types of courses over the past five years and projected into next year. At the choir-band enrollment, the choir-band and orchestra enrollment section, to the right, you can see the blue charts that start with the year '24, '25. Those are representative of if every single kiddo who is in a choir, band, or orchestra class at a feeder district right now, going into next year in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, if every single one of those kiddos was retained, that's what the numbers represent in the blue.
Can I have a quick point of clarification on that? My understanding is that the feeder schools offer band and orchestra classes as seventh and eighth graders, or they do not offer a choir class? Do you?
The Hauser has a choir class, yes.
Okay.
They don't.
They do not anymore.
They lost a teacher.
They lost a teacher.
Okay. I believe the choir was an after-school activity.
Yes, yes. And District 96 is also the only school feeding into us that has an orchestra program.
Right.
So, that's sort of where that comes now. I put the note on the side of those. So that's sort of where that comes now. I put the note on the side of those projected numbers because I think it's important for us to note that we can't assume that we're going to retain every one of those kids. And that was actually a caution shared by one of the feeder superintendents because you can't know for certain that a kid who's in orchestra in sixth grade is going to want to do that, for example, when they come in. So the very, very bottom of this chart, yes.
Kylie, do you have any anecdotal, and I know you won't have numbers, but your experience of doing this many years, do you find when the students come from the middle schools that if they were doing some type of music program, they see other stuff and maybe they choose other stuff? Has that been your experience or?
I don't think I have enough data to speak on it. When we were talking to the feeder supes, you know, the, one of the superintendents mentioned a 50%, rate, but I can't say that that's correct or not. I don't, I don't have that level of information. When you look at the very bottom of this chart, you see in yellow total music FTE. And what we've tried to do in this chart is tease out very specifically, starting with 2018, 19, what amount of FTE was allocated to solely choir, band, or orchestra FTE. As I mentioned, fine arts survey has been taken out. That was a course that did not just live in the music department, so it lived in with a dance teacher and with a visual arts teacher. It was a rotation-based course. So we teased that out. So we're truly looking at electives, what students are electing to take in terms of those music offerings. If you look at that bottom chart, what I've also done is in kind of a lighter font and very small, you can see what teachers were teaching at what FTE within the music department in those purely elective choirs. Some notes at the very bottom, just so that everyone kind of has a frame of reference, a 1.0 FTE represents a teacher teaching five classes each semester. When we're talking about a .2, we're talking about a year-long course. When we're talking about a .1, we're talking about a semester-long course.
So a teacher, let's take a break there. So a teacher for the, for the public watching, a teacher could have built into that 1.0, .2s, .1s, right? You could have a class like a rock band, that's a semester course. You could have a choir, that's a .2. So that's how you build up a teacher's schedule. So when you look at our music electives over the last five years on that sheet, it will lay out for you kind of how, how many FTEs we've had. So if you look at this consistently, we had our peak in 2021, where we had 2.8. We had about 500 students enrolled in elective classes. Okay? Before that, it was 2.1 and 2.4. And now what you've seen after that peak, we've had 2.3, 2.4, 2.2. So it does fluctuate, but it has somewhat held somewhat consistent. Last board meeting, a community member asked, like, what should be our target? What should be the target of how we can solidify staffing? When you, when you, we go on into the second chart and we talk a little bit about electives, you're going to see that while no classes have been cut for music, student enrollments have shifted to other electives. And so we'll show you that here in a second. But if we can get those numbers closer to where we were, and I'm saying the word closer, I am not saying you have to get to there. I'm saying if we can get closer to where we were in 2020, 2021, that's how you'll have an increase in staffing. You, we are running the classes, so if we get an increase in 10 kids, the choir might go from 16 to 26. I mean, that's still not enough to say, oh, we're going to add a second section of choir. But it's just giving you an idea of where we were when we were at 2.8 FTEs without fine arts survey and where we're at today. So I wanted to make sure we kind of had an understanding of that. We also have to take into account as the elementary numbers come in, we'll also have seniors leaving. So we have to, this will all, that all plays into that total number of students enrolled. So the staffing model is strictly based on student selection. So we have to, if someone asks, well, how can we help build up these staffing numbers? The real, the real work would start probably fourth, fifth, sixth. We have to start building in all of our feeder schools if we want to see consistent numbers play out through the high school years. So when the kids are coming in, we can keep the orchestra numbers where they're at, the band numbers where they're at, and continue to grow the choir numbers.
But Dr. Skinkis, where are we right now with overall school enrollment? Is that on the next slide? Because I think this is our peak year right now.
We are at 16, the projection for this past school year was 1677. We came in at, the projection, excuse me, was 1692. We came in at 1677. Next year's projection is 1679. And it will be 1653 at RB. So that, we were at 1657 enrolled in classes at RB last, this current school year.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Correct. And next year, we're slated to be at 1653.
Okay. So this was, I think, just we had discussed on the board when we did the sectioning process before, maybe this is from Mr. Novak as a new member, this is the, this is the biggest enrollment year that we're just wrapping up and we show a projection, and this is not related to music, but it's, it's related to the overall students coming in. It goes down for the next, I want to say, four years, five years?
Twenty-five, we go down to 1664 in projection. This is what the board received in November would be also available on the website. 1664 for FY '25, 1639 for '26, 1604 in '27, and 1552 in '28. So overall enrollment is projected to go on a decline for the next four years based on enrollments at our feeder schools, kindergarten through eighth grade.
Thank you. I didn't mean to get distracted. I just thought that was some context I wanted to have before we go into the next slide.
I think one more comment too. If we're looking at a peak, the 2.8, and we're down to 2.2, that we're talking about a difference of three classes, right? Or what are we, what are we really looking at?
Yes, a .6.
That's a point, that's a .6. So that is a total of three classes, right?
Three-year-long classes, yeah.
Three, so that's from our peak to this year, the difference is three classes.
Right.
Okay, three one-year classes.
Yeah.
Now, like, what we've done in the past and what we did last year, we'll be doing again next year is the 2.4 to 2.2. So we do offer those staff members, if they want to work to get made full-time on the, like a non-certified position like study hall or teacher's aide or security, that's how we round out their schedule so that they can receive benefits and receive additional compensation for the hours they are not teaching. And so we've done that before. We've got, we tried to get creative in '21, '22 where we tried to share an orchestra teacher because two years ago, we had orchestra parents in front of us, not choir parents. And that was the same situation. We were down to where we were, our orchestra numbers were down. So we tried to share an orchestra teacher with District 96 where they were .6 at our building and .3 at District 96. And then we used that other .1 for travel and prep. And so we have tried some creative things and we do round out the employee schedule or give them an option to round out their schedule so that they can still receive compensation for hours they're not teaching and still be eligible for benefits under our collective bargaining agreement.
And most of our music teachers do music clubs, right? Are doing something related to music afterwards. Does Miss Metana do the musical or the vocal part of the musical?
All of our music teachers qualify for a stipend. So there's the band director, assistant band director, and there's a vocal music director. So there's three different stipends to that. That covers the time and hours they put in outside of the contract for the choirs, concerts and those types of things, try him. Then there's also additional stipends that are available. If they work with the musical, they get additional compensation for that. There's additional compensation. A small stipend was just approved for a cappella club for next year. So there are additional stipends that they also do for any work outside of the school. No different than if a teacher in English, math, or science was coaching or sponsoring the club, very similar to that.
Do you want to go into the next one?
Yeah, I just, I think so, when we talk about, when we do hear sometimes about three full-time teachers, we haven't had three full-time in regards to our music electives over the last five years, especially since the withdrawal of the fine arts survey. Now where this may be to the student's perspective is they may see a teacher teaching a few courses and still in the building all day, but that's not necessarily a full-time teacher. They may be teaching two or three choirs and then being in the study hall for two periods. And so that would give the impression of there was a full-time, they were a full-time teacher, but it's really not staffed under the contract and how we do staffing for budgeting purposes as a full-time teacher. So I hope that explanation.
So that applies to the other, I'm looking at the next slide. I'm sorry, Laura.
Just to ask one question, Kylie, maybe you can confirm. So when we look at this chart, and I'm looking at number of sections, and that would be actual music classes, right? I'm trying to find where that loss of the three classes might be. And when I look at it, it looks like maybe the, the loss was in a symphonic marching band. We lost one class there, right?
Mm-hmm.
But then we went down a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't see any other lot. And this year, we're not, is AP Music Theory like in every other year, right?
Yep. So that's one of them, AP Music Theory is in every other year, and it ran this year. So it's not slated to run next year.
Run next year. So that's another, we, we should expect to be down .2 because we're not running that class.
It'll be up .2 next year because it will run.
Right.
And some would say, why, well, why do you run it every other year? Because if you see the history, four kids, three kids, 16, seven, 14. So once we started to run it every other year, then those juniors and seniors can plan on taking that. So they planned out their schedule so they could take it as either juniors or seniors. We did hear the comment from the community last week that there was concerns that their counselors weren't promoting the AP Music Theory. So we're addressing that. We talked to Ms. Augustine to make sure that's being promoted so they know. It's also stated in the curriculum guide, which is online, that it runs every other year. So we need to make sure that better communication occurs so that it's in those kids' four-year plans that if they want to take AP Music Theory, they can take it as a junior or senior.
Yeah. So it looks like our difference is in number of marching band sections.
Yeah, that's, that seems to be like where the largest fluctuation has come because we, since I arrived here, we've routinely run all three of our choirs, for example. And in some cases, in certain years, we have had enough band students where we've had to co-teach a band. Some years, we haven't. So there's been some fluctuation there while we've kind of held at those three choirs. I think it's important to Ms. Ruska's point too, when you're looking for like the where did it go factor for next year, I think it's important to note that when we look at next year, we're looking at what looks like a reduction in .4 when in actuality, .2 of that is the every other year AP Music Theory. And .2 is the redistribution of FTE because of the contract change from instructional coaches to division heads where the teacher leader of the fine arts department does not have a release period. And so that individual is going back into the classroom for that full five classes, that 1.0 FTE.
Right. So we didn't drop a section. We actually, Mr. Baum is going back into
Correct.
Right. So when you look at this, our choir sections are consistent. We've not lost a choir section.
Correct.
So we, the only sections we've lost are in marching band.
Yes. And we've had some fluctuation, like in rock band. There's been a couple years where there's been fluctuation. And we also have sometimes some fluctuation in studio music production, depending on which students go into those two classes.
But according to this chart, rock band has two sections.
Yes, it does now. There, yes, yes. Rock band has held steady. The Honors Wind Ensemble has fluctuated a little when you trace, you know, where the twos and the ones are on that other side, along with a couple of the other bands.
In this past year, was it this year, we co-taught one of the bands because we had slightly higher numbers?
It wasn't this current school year. I believe it was, I'm looking at my master schedule right now.
The year before?
The '21, '22 school year where both Mr. Loeb and Ms. Metana taught symphonic band together because of the numbers in that '21, '22 school year.
So we want to go into the next slide, is that?
Okay.
Supports the discussion, right?
Yeah, I think, I think for the next slide, we just put all of our electives up over five years. So our staffing has actually gone up in districts over the last two years. What's happened though is student selections have shifted significantly to visual arts and the applied arts. So if you look at like elective enrollments and classes and staffing, while the orange band, which represents the music enrollment and music staffing has gone down, you'll see the purple band and the green band have increased to reflect the increases in student selections in those courses. So if we look, and if you look at the red box, I mean, right now, we had 1,200 kids sign up for applied arts courses next year. We can only staff for 1,053 because we can't find enough teachers to teach those classes. There's a shortage of teachers in the applied arts. So we're even working on trying to get people that are working in the building that have career experience
Industry credentials.
Industry credentials in order to have them help teach some of these classes. So that's, that's where our most recent trend has shifted, is a lot of students taking these career pathway courses and courses like culinary arts, auto, automotives, certified nursing assistant. We're starting that program at Triton. So that's where we've seen some shift in, in the election, elective process. Kylie, you want to provide a little more color to that?
Yeah, I think the main, I think the key to the elective story is the applied arts. In the 18, 19 school year, for example, I had a teacher that was slated to start teaching in child development, human growth and development, health occupations, and she left right before school started. So we had to cancel those courses. So since, really since I've arrived at RB, the last two years are the exception, what ends up happening is we get a certain number of requests in the applied arts for foods, for culinary, for autos, and we have to cap that. We end up shaving, you can see it noted in 23, 24, we end up shaving out pockets of kids who are then steered into other electives because in the past, we simply have not been able to staff those classes. And I think maybe someone told the universities that when kids are looking for something to go into in education, it might be a good idea to go into the applied arts because we are starting to see now, we were able to, you know, hire a 1.0 family and consumer science teacher for this school year. We're able to replace Ms. Farley with a 1.0 family and consumer science teacher for next school year. So the applied arts really, as you are seeing more things like I spoke about earlier, college and career pathway endorsements becoming a push from the state of Illinois, dual credit and dual enrollment programs, students are being introduced to these programs that lend themselves to a foundation for what they want to do when they leave. And I think they're seeing that opportunity and they're going into those places. When you look at this second chart that starts with applied arts enrollment at the top and includes music and visual and then total elective enrollment, when you see, for example, on the music chart, when you see in '21 or 2021 to 21, 22, when you see us in music go from 501 to 373 in music, you also see in the green chart, us go from 758 to 822 in applied arts. You see us go from 467 to 645 in the visual arts. So you are seeing a corresponding move at that point. It's very easy to see in some cases where those students are going, where, where those numbers dip in some places, they increase in others. And so that was the, what we were trying to show, kind of where does this student choice go when we're talking about courses outside the academic core?
So are we more likely to get dual credit in applied arts, visual arts?
Not necessarily. The, when you're looking for dual credit approval, you're looking for either a master's degree in the content area, not teaching, but in the content, so a master's of business or a master's of graphic design. Or you're looking for 2,000 industry credential hours. So for example, one of the reasons why Gary Prokes is able to offer his courses dual credit is he has many more than 2,000 hours working in the television production industry. Our new, new to us this year, food teacher, Mr. Lewis, was able to, even though this is his first year teaching, was able to get approved for dual credit because he has over 2,000 hours working in the food service industry as a chef. So it really depends on what someone's educational background is, whether or not they have their masters in their content. And then dual credit is oftentimes looking for that industry experience because those pathways are tied to work experience hours. So it is helpful when we're seeking dual credit if someone has... So it is helpful when we're seeking dual credit if someone has worked as a musician in the industry for 2,000 hours or more, or a graphic designer, a photographer, an auto mechanic, things of that nature. That's really the kind of the linchpin for that dual credit experience.
Okay, and 2,000 hours, that's about a year.
Right, here, what happens here is, there was a comment made about assigning kids to study hall, we do not assign students to study hall, students and their parents have a choice, you get, we have seven periods in the school day, if, we have several, over 60% of our students, 60 something percent of our students take seven classes. However, if you think about this kind of like in a simple slices of the pie, four or five of those courses are your required course, your math, your science, your English, your physical education, unless you waive out for, you know, an applied arts course, there's certain state criteria. So a student anywhere throughout their year has two to three courses a year where they can choose their electives. So if a student has an interest in psych, and now has an interest in culinary arts, that may force that student to then say, I might choose in a third year of music or a second year of music. So sometimes what we do see happen is as the students from the feeder schools come in, they will see that they have more choices, and, and all of a sudden, you start seeing students pick other things, you start seeing juniors and seniors start picking different electives. Now, again, I'm just trying to, we're just trying to explain kind of like how this works so that the board, as well as the people watching, can understand this a little better.
So can we talk then about how those, when those choices are made on the calendar, and how it impacts the staffing decision? Because I think that seems to be the crux of one of the matters.
Okay, so in November, every November, the board receives a report, and Ms. Lindquist, Ms. Augustine will present to the board, actually goes even one step further, Ms. Matana will present at, earlier in that meeting, projected enrollment, projected enrollment for the next school year, and then the next four years following. And then after that, we work at where we're at with staffing, and then based on that projected enrollment, what projected FTE should be. And so then we would say, oh, it's 108 teachers, we don't know where those 108 or 110 teachers will be assigned. And then students from November, late October, early November, through January, when the freshmen come for future Bulldog Night, thing like that, that's when the students come in and they select their courses. And they pick what they want to take, they put, under electives, they'll put first and second choices, so if they don't get their first choice, they get their second choice. And based on those numbers, in February, we start to assign teachers to classes. So when we have, now we have some obligations from the state, so if we don't have enough teachers and, or enough classes for a teacher, if you have to do a reduction of force, you have to notify those teachers 45 school days before the end of the school year, so that's roughly the March board meeting. We usually will notify part-time people, what we do every year is we notify part-time people, like, we've given you notice that we're not sure how many sections you'll have, so we do that in February. And so we provide these notices to the staff and to the board in February and in March.
That was helpful, thank you. Any other questions for me on either of those?
So I'd like to go back real quick to that, just that example that I was giving. So we've heard from the community, like, it's important to do some of these career pathways. So now we're looking at offering students opportunity to take courses at Triton and work on become, getting dual credit and dual enrollment. So what that means is even though they're considered a senior or a junior at RV, they can take their electives at Triton and get college credit at the same time while they're earning RV credit, whether that's in this year, we're doing certified nursing assistant, whatever some of the other.
Criminal justice.
Criminal justice.
Of course, my mind is blank now.
Welding?
Yes, welding is one of them too.
Engineering technology, so we have, so again, if a student says, I'm going to choose that and not choose this, now that's, those, those classes, because there's travel to Triton and stuff, those are now periods out of that kid's school day where they're going and working on elective somewhere else. Now we're working on trying to get internships with all the different trades, so that if students want to start apprenticeships, they can start maybe working on apprenticeships with local plumbers or local carpenters, or, so all of those will start counting as electives, and that's becoming a state requirement in
2027, you have to have had one fully gone through.
So the state's requiring you to provide more opportunities and more career pathways for students, so this is going to be something that, you know, as frustrated as some of the parents may be, when I say we really got to start building the music numbers up way earlier than by the time they get to high school, because there's going to be other implicating factors that are going to play into this, whether that's the requirement to have a career pathway experience on your transcript before you graduate, the requirement now, right now at RV, we do not require foreign language. Foreign language is considered an elective, you can graduate from RV and not take foreign language, that can count as one of the, it's in the arts, but we do not require it, but it's now in 2027, or is it 29?
I'm going to double check, I think it's
But that's now going to become a new requirement from the state where you have to take foreign language. So again, there will be another piece of the puzzle that may, right, so they're, they're forced, as much as we want to have all these great offerings, at some point, a student's going to have to choose if they want to go into music full time, or if they want to go into some, another elective or another field full time.
Well, I can't speak enough to having some of those career paths, like a certified nurse assistant, some of our students by senior year will graduate and actually be able to have a certificate that will allow them to earn reputable money, work in a hospital or nursing home, and start doing, you know, what they need, really need to do, so that's incredible.
Yes.
And we're going to get that in a couple of different areas, I think that's a great option for us.
Yeah, it's 28, 29 is when the world language requirement comes in, and it will be two years of world languages, yeah, beginning with the 28, 29 school year.
So what are the questions from the board on these charts? Thoughts, comments?
I think my question has always been, because I remember last year, we had to give Ms. Matana notice in February, but then we were able to bring her back, and my question has always been, what's preventing us from, like, and why did we have to give her notice again this year, and we're trying to find a way to bring her back, and if we are going to bring her back, it's all going to work out, but how do we, how do we prevent this from happening every February, like, what's the
Yeah, it happens, you know, it happens, it happens every two years, I mean, two years ago was with Mr. Loeb, and, so the way this works is, you know, there is some contractual obligations of years of service and seniority, so there is a, you know, the first one in, last one out type of, so like Mr. Baum's the most senior, then Mr. Loeb, then Ms. Matana, so you have to go with the least senior teacher has to provide notice, so you have to do it as an insurance because you don't have all the staffing and sections aligned yet. And then we try to call those teachers back as soon as possible, so at this point, we have a point two, and we'll round out that schedule with study halls for next year. If we, you know, and then if something changes over summer where you get transfers, and there's an increase, a small, even if it's a small increase in sections or numbers, you know, if, you could, the board can always add an additional point two before the start of next school year, should those numbers shift, but there is some state regulatory responsibility of noticing people if there's reductions in force, this happens every year in schools. Unfortunately, it happens in single high school districts, here, here's, here's the truth of the crux, right? When you go to a larger school district that has a couple of high schools, you may have a music teacher that teaches point six at South Campus and point four at North Campus, right? Well, we don't have that ability, so what we have to do is if we only have a point six, we have to let you know we only have a point six for you, so that that teacher has plenty of time if they want to pursue another job, or we're at least putting them on notice that right now, they don't have full time status for next year, there's some school code requirements for that. You know, so that's where sometimes school districts or high school districts have multiple high schools, or that are a unit district, they're able to move those teachers around because a band teacher, a music teacher, a certified band orchestra and choir.
K-12.
K-12. So they're able to move, move people around so that they have some more flexibility in their assignments and stuff, so that when they have a good teacher, they can move that teacher around till the numbers either get built back up, or you can move teachers around so that maybe someone's more slated with a specific content area can be moved between two or three buildings. We don't have that flexibility.
And that's why we tried to do, and we were successful in doing the sharing with District 96, and that agreement did not dissolve because they were not thrilled with the way that Mr. Loeb performed there, they loved him, they needed someone full time themselves. So it just became a different set of needs. After the year that we, we did try to get creative and kind of create a unit district type of situation in a one high school district.
It was a CBA amendment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments?
No. Thank you, thank you Kylie, that chart was, I thought, very helpful.
We have a couple other reports, I'd like to get some of the other issues that we have paid for you to move on to the principal's report.
Leave to move things out of order, yeah.
So the principal's report is next, but I'd like to, Kylie, if you have to, before you give the principal's report, maybe we can call up
Dave and the
Dave and Brendan, sure, Dave?
Yeah.
So I don't know if everybody's met them, but it's a real little refresh on, for O'Hakes, Dean of Students, Kara Wyber, Dean of Students, Dave Mann, Assistant Principal.
Okay, good evening, board. This report is done annually at the end of the school year to provide some information regarding our second semester data, so I'm here with the two deans tonight, Ms. Weinberg and Mr. Hakes, to report out on our second semester data in regards to overall average daily attendance, tardy averages, suspension offenses, and then near the end of the report, the deans will share out some of our office procedures utilized this while, this year, as well as feature initiatives that are going to guide our department moving forward. So at the top of this report, the overall daily attendance percentage from the 22, 23 school year came in around 92.6%. If you look at the historical data within the chart, our attendance is down slightly from where we're at last year. I will say, and I sit on a cohort through our regional office in regards to attendance with other school leaders, attendance is an area that all schools across the state are struggling with, and if you look at the report data from the Illinois Report Card, the average for the state currently is around 90%, and that's from the last school year. Lot of factors that go into this, some of them are mental health days count against our school, or any school in Illinois, and those days are provided, students provided five mental health days as an excuse, but it does count against our attendance numbers, as well as we've seen a rise in sicknesses, still coming off, you know, COVID, we see a rise in some of the callouts for vacations, as well as doctor's appointments, and the deans will get into that here shortly as well. I would just strongly advocate parents, just the importance of seat time and getting back to the engagement and having their student involved and, and having a healthy relationship with their attendance at school, and being engaged, and I know our teachers will appreciate that as well, and that's going to be our focus going forward, so I'm going to turn it over to the deans at this point.
Good evening, as Dave mentioned, I'm Kara Weinberg, I'm one of the deans. If you want to take a look really quick at the total attendance averages per month, you'll see that we hovered, you know, in 91% for the vast majority of second semester, 91.9 in January, 91.2 in February, 91.7 in March, and then an uptick in April and May, landing us at 93.1, low for a variety of reasons in January, February, and March. You know, we are seeing, like Dave mentioned, an uptick in vacations, just a good data point back pre-pandemic numbers in the 18, 19 school year, about 292 students had a vacation callout code somewhere in their attendance record. For this past school year, that number was 533 students, so that is double the amount of vacation callouts that we saw prior to the pandemic. Similarly, we are seeing a 15% increase in sick callouts for this past school year, I, we did encourage students to stay home if they weren't feeling good, again, coming off of the pandemic, and then we are seeing anywhere from a two to a 5% uptick in doctors' visits as well. So lots of parent callouts for attendance, and that's reflected in our average daily attendance as well for this school year, so 93.1, I'm sorry, 93.12% for semester one compared to 93.5 last year, semester two, 92.05 compared to 93.1, and then that final 92.6 compared to 93.3. So lots of parent callouts, so valid reasons that we're seeing, we, I'll get into kind of at the end, what we're doing to encourage students and parents to be reflective in what they're calling out for, but we are, you know, continuing to focus on that, and I will pass it off to Dean Hakes for tardies.
Dean Hakes, before you start, so I did, just want to make sure, the requirement of providing mental health days to students, so even though that's required by the state to provide those, and then there's certain, like if a student takes two or three, they have to do certain steps with our SELT, those still can count against you though.
It counts against the school for attendance data purposes, there's inter procedures that our Student Services Office does to follow up with those students afterwards to see kind of what's going on and what supports we can offer them, but that does count against us, and that's something that we've, as our trinity network has gone through conversation and conversation this year, something that we're advocating, maybe hopefully will change in the future.
Was that, was the effective date on that, January of '22?
Was it right after the pandemic, '21, '22, fall '21, I want to say?
Yeah, we, this was included, this was included last year as well.
Yeah, so this is
Okay, I just wasn't sure what the
But I think it was January, I don't think it started in the fall.
It was a January
January 2022, so this is our second year though that it's having impact.
Correct.
Second, third semester.
Because I'm seeing a drop off between '21 and '22, and that's what I'm wondering what the attribution is.
Yeah, the standard average was around 94%, and then when those days kicked in, plus, you know, follow up through COVID, now they're down 4%, so, so are we, our numbers are going with that as well. So, and we're going to talk about some of the things that we're doing here as an department at the end of the report, and we'll get into that here shortly.
And again, just to add to Ms. Weinberg's report, the important thing to know is that they're not unverified answers, right? Parents are calling in, so they're valid excuses, they're just, there's that many more, you know. I want to talk about tardies a little bit, or tardy averages. You see on, on the table here, you know, we, we average anywhere from 13, you know, 13.8, we saw a rise in March, and when I talk about the, when we, when we go over our suspension numbers, you'll see that, that's kind of where, where we hit a stride, right, in March with, with some behaviors, in a, you know, our average is 17.73. What we noticed was that the majority of those tardies, and a majority meaning a high 90 percentage, it's first period, first period tardies, mostly Mondays, and then, interesting enough, Thursdays, late start Thursday, I don't know if we have to remind students that late start Thursday means, it doesn't mean that you come to school late, it's, you know, just that you get another hour.
I think, reflecting on that, it's the switch from 8:05 to 9 o'clock. I think kids think, oh, I have to leave my house 20 minutes before school, and they think, oh, that's, if it starts at 8:05, I have to leave at 7:45, and they forget to add that extra five minutes, I have that battle in my house.
Well, and you know, we, we've been working with parents all year, again, it's mostly first period, there's multiple drop offs with a lot of families where they have to take their, you know, younger children to feeder schools, you know, so there, there's been a lot of that, you know, there has been some construction stuff, but it's mostly, again, it's a small amount of students who have the majority of these tardies, but, you know, we're in constant communication with, with families in regards to getting students to school on time.
I also wonder what your comparators are to pre-pandemic, right? So people were, we did school from home for parts of 2021?
Yes, I think
Yeah, so 2021, that one, I mean, we can almost
Right, so that is just naturally repressed, right?
They want to really hear, you know?
Right, so 19, if you go back to, again, to the 18, 19 school year, it probably is a different comparator.
In the teens again.
Yeah, it's more comparable to like 21, 22, you know?
So, so when you have 20, just, we'll take May, 20.31 tardies, is that like an average number per day?
Yes, that's an average.
On 1,600 students?
Yeah, so it's per day, per period, so on average, but you know, most of those being first period.
Okay, so that would be more first period.
So it could be from nine to, to 20 or so.
Because I'm thinking, 20 out of 1,600 students, that's
That's fantastic.
Yeah, that's fantastic, okay.
No, but it's an average of per period.
All, all the periods, okay.
And, yeah, I mean, that's where we're, you know, we're, we're working with parents, email, phone, whatever, maybe, we're, we're working with those students, conversations every day, we don't, you know, they're not just a number, right? So we try to do that in the deans office to, to see what's going on, why are we late, what's going on, you know, and trying to get, get them there on time.
Yeah, within that system, our hero system, there is a connection, a personal connection from staff member to student, or administrator to student with the tardy pass, so it's not just a print, a slip that comes out and then they go to class, there is that conversation piece, and that's what I love about it, but we'll continue to work with that system to see what we can do to bring that number down going forward.
You know, with that, you know, it's something that our, our security team helps us with every day as well, with notifications during the day, depending on the number of tardies, so it's, it's, it all ends on deck when it comes to that, you know, so So it's, it all ends on deck when it comes to that, you know, so kudos to them, shout out to security for helping us out. Any questions about tardies?
I have one other question, sorry. I believe it was second semester, you started the policy that class starts at 8:05, but if you're in the building after eight, you're tardy.
Yeah, so, okay.
How did that work, and is that part of this?
Well, so when students walk into the building, so, you know, we're at the door, right, with our hero printers, if they walk into the building at 8 o'clock, that means they're going to be, they're going to arrive later to their class. So at this point, you know, they get their pass when they walk into the building, because they would have been, you know, they should be in their seat, right, by 7:55, you know, or whatever.
To be early is to be on time, and to be on time is to be late.
Has to be late, right? So, yeah, so if, so parents receive that notification via email, and I've gotten this a few times over the phone or whatever, about, you know, my child was, it said 8 o'clock on the pass, right, and that's the time they walked into the building. You know, it's not when they got to class, so, you know, that's how we.
Is this reoccurring, Dean?
The goal, too, is to limit those instructional disruptions, and so if we can get them into that pattern to hopefully limit the amount of kids coming in late disrupting that instructions.
I mean, I get it, I think it's a good habit to start, so I hope that that policy continues for the next year, and students will just get used to it. And as you just get them coming in with that mentality, then you'll read out the sophomore, junior, seniors that are used to the whole way.
It's a consistent, it has to be a consistent approach, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
And it's gotten better, it's improved a lot, I mean, we got kids sprinting across golf, you know?
Well, we got someone managing traffic.
There's someone out there always, right, but they don't want to be late, so, you know, we're working on that. If you would skip over to the suspensions, you know, we got some interesting data with that. You know, our numbers are, we're at 40, 43 suspensions this semester with 31 students, which is actually, I think, one more than we had last year. We did have, we had several students receive multiple suspensions. So, you know, we work with their families, you know, to get them any services, whatever they may need, you know? It's been, you know, trying to support those families, right, support staff, small teams, all that. So that, those suspensions, that's what you see there, right, 31 students, but a big chunk of those suspensions are repeated offenses or offenders.
Were those in-school suspensions?
So this is just out-of-school suspensions.
Those are out.
So, yeah, so in-school suspension, you know, we have, we don't have that number here, but, you know, our ADA, right? We do for less egregious offenses, right? And then actually, another shout out to the teachers, we get, we also get a report of staff managed referrals, which we've seen an increase in teachers, you know, reporting, you know, submitting a referral, but not sending them to the dean's office. So they're handling it in their class, which is always nice, right, they're maintaining that, their relationship with their kids. You know, they address it in class, and, you know, unless it's something disruptive completely, then that's when we see them. But teachers have been helping us with that, too.
And this doesn't show repeat offenders, this is just total?
And then, not specifically, but again, so there's 43 suspensions, 31 students, so some of those students were under a few times.
Yeah, and the area that we saw the most, I guess, repeated offense would be like disrupting your learning environment, classroom disruptions and things like that. Last year, we presented out this data, and there was talk about, hey, why are the fights up? And it's just kind of one of those things where we had a really good year with culture in regards to fighting altercations in our building, we had four second semesters, so that's great. You know, it means that, like, security's present, those relationships are being built. However, you know, we continue to have to work with students in regards to their classroom decorum, their etiquette, things like that, and the services support that we have. And it's a process, it's not just a suspension, you're out, it's a return, it's an agreement, it's a small team approach with Student Services and Beth's Office. It's like, how are we going to line some interventions going forward with them? Then do we need to track data, you know, how are, what are their mannerisms, how are they acting in the classroom, and beyond, going? You know, it's more of like a child find process then after that, too. So we do our due diligence, there's a lot that's built in within some of the interventions that these guys are working through with these students. And so overall, you know, 31, that's down probably around 30, I think, from about four or five years ago, pre-COVID. So we really have done a good job of trying alternative ways about intervening with students that have some behaviors and disruptions for the classroom environment.
And then the last table, if you would please, the suspension by, per race. So again, you know, 33 total suspension, students suspended. Actually, it's got 33, Hispanic, 11 out of 701, you know, based on the population. White, 12 out of 796, black, 7 out of 90, and then anyone who, you know, multiple races or whatever it may be, or other, 1 out of 98. So I think we've stayed pretty, those numbers have stayed pretty consistent over the years.
And if you guys want to get into like consistent practices and then interventions, what we're going forward with.
So a lot of the numbers have stayed consistent because of the practices that we continue out of our office. So things like your parent phone calls and communication for when a student reaches five and 10 absences. We have been sending those auto emails home to parents. This will address both attendance and discipline issues. Anytime a student is absent for 10 consecutive days without a parent call-in, we will work with Riverside Police or Brookfield Police to initiate a well-being check on that family. If we can't reach them, just to make sure that they are okay, and to see what services we can provide to bring that student back to the building. As Dave mentioned, we continue to use our hero system for tardies and attendance communication. We do use ADA, so our alternative day assignment in school suspension, as you mentioned. In lieu of out-of-school suspension, the goal is to keep kids in the building. During ADA, students are able to work on their assignments, in addition to potentially having access to a social worker, our office as well. We reviewed handbook policies, we continue to do that all the time, behavior expectations through grade level assemblies, which we do each semester. We, Alberto and I, attend the small team meeting with Beth's team to address attendance and behavior issues, and that is weekly, twice a week. We also meet with families pretty regularly for reentry meetings for students who are suspended out of the building. And we work with social workers for mediation. A lot of, you know, post-pandemic, we've seen a lot of peer-to-peer conflict, and we work frequently with the social workers and counselors to address that between students. Some new things that we're doing this year are security rotations in the video room, too, which is a new room that we added down in the special ed hallway, to monitor movement in and outside of the building. That's been really instrumental to, you know, see things like fights as they happen, or to monitor security outside of the building as well. Alberto and I have begun to attend the Spence Small Team and Pride Weekly Meetings to provide some feedback for students who are needing some of those extra supports. We utilize Third Millennium now as well, as part of our ADA program, which is a restorative practice for students, it's an online education program. So, you know, a student who has a nicotine bait, for example, would complete the bait program through Third Millennium during their ADA assignment. One thing that we really started this year, too, was checking in with students during their lunch periods regarding unverified absences. So if a student has an unverified absence, Alberto and I will speak with them during their lunch period. It is not something that students generally love, and so they try to address that with us as early as possible in the day. But we have built a practice with them now that they are checking their attendance, they do come down to the office to fix it, so that we don't say their name during lunch.
Well, with that, I mean, just so that everyone knows, I mean, so if they're unverified or if they're tardy, they receive notification, right, on the spot. Parents also receive notification as it happens. We then have security help us out, and our clerical staff, we run passes during like second or third period as well. So there's a second notification, right? So if, if with those two notifications, we don't get any, you know, you know, they don't come to the office and square away their attendance, then, you know, then we talk to them during lunch.
And you cross-check it with the phone calls, right, because there is a lag.
Yes, there is a lag.
Because the systems don't talk.
Every now and then we have to, you know, we'll call someone who.
Mr. Mannen is working on.
Oh, okay.
Skyward, so that a parent can use their user access, username and password to log in and.
Report it there.
Report it electronically, so we don't have to have.
That's in place now, I believe.
It's in place now, but we're going to promote it, so it's a good plug for residency, in-person residency. Once you're residency, I would suggest all parents that, you know, have a student enrolled next year to complete that process online now, the portal's open. Those notifications have gone out, but after you are approved and your residency documents are good to go, and you sign up for an in-person appointment, the deans are going to have a separate table this year of residency to go over just that, just the attendance protocols, how do you get Skyward access? We're going to hand out magnets with schedules, with QR codes, so that you can just put that on your fridge, hit the QR code, and then get right into the Skyward portal to put your attendance in. And that actually helps our office out a lot, because we don't have one person on the phone for hours on end, where she can just then click through if it's on Skyward. So we really want to promote that and encourage families to use that option for attendance purposes.
That, that sounds like a great option, maybe you might want to have that table here during open house. So anybody who didn't do an in-person registration, they can get that magnet, and you can go over that. That, I think a lot of families would really appreciate that, how do I do that?
Yeah, not only Skyward, but all of our applications, so the remind application, you know, and how that, that's utilized. When you get a hero notification, what does that look like? So kind of hit those three areas from our department, and just provide some more information and clarity for families regarding that process.
Sounds good.
Any other questions for the deans and assistant principal?
I have a question, I'm not sure if it's appropriate, but it was brought up by a parent. So I'd like, as far as new initiatives for next year, how we are going to handle the online bullying? Because, yeah.
Okay, so there was a question submitted about that previously, so let me get to that really quick. So there was a House Bill 3425 that was just approved on June 9th, so now it's an act. Now just read the requirements for that. So that requires school officials in the state of Illinois to make diligent efforts to notify a parent or guardian of a student's involvement in a bullying incident within 24 hours. And the key here is for 24 hours, when we're notified of that situation. So that includes any type of online bullying, threat suggestions, also instance of self-harm due to bullying. So those kind of all fall under that umbrella, but it's when the office is notified. So that's a current practice that we currently do. When we're notified, those phone calls go out within that 24-hour period, and unfortunately, you know, sometimes they happen over the weekend, you know? But these, like, the hours they put in, and we're always extending, so they're going to make, we're going to make phone calls on the weekends when we get that information.
My assumption, since that's new legislation, there'll be a lot of legal notices, I know I A S B had a blurb on it as well. I think some, you know, eventually maybe going into enrollment in the fall, some clarity on what constitutes bullying, I think is one of the, there's legal definitions to it, which probably doesn't help people who are in the midst of it, but there is a, there's a component that needs to be considered in terms of what rises to the level of bullying and reportable, as I understand the legislation. And then also what the district's responsibilities are for third-party.
Correct.
What am I looking for, third-party sites, thank you, social media apps, yeah. Which I know we have, you know, we've talked about that as well. So I think that's, in my opinion, there's some information that's really coming out on this in a pretty quick fashion, that we should, you know, keep our ears and eyes open towards the different resources we have to understand what it really means for the district moving forward.
And there's also protections in place for due process of the alleged offender as well, so that.
Well, I think we're probably crossing over free speech. Well, some students.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, no, I mean, somebody could just say, I mean, everybody has a right to say something, whether it's offensive or not, but at what point? And what is our legal, you know, what can we do, where do we get to say you don't have a right to say that?
I think, I think that there's a due process component, right? So I think the due process needs to be just understood, right?
Just to add, like, have a flowchart for that procedural-wise.
Right.
We have the concern report, and we have QR codes throughout our entire building, and it's on the actual back of each student's ID. And so we promote that as much as possible, and it could be anything. Disagreement with the teacher over their seat assignment, it doesn't matter. You know, once that comes in, then it's, okay, bring that student down, have them fill out a separate report so that we get all that information. It's a little bit of a process. And then if it's against, you know, another student, if it's a bullying or harassment type situation, then we bring that student in, give them their time, their due process, have them fill that form out, compile all that information, and then make a determination about where we're going forward with, whether we have a form in the office that sets expectations up, and it's a specific form for harassment or like targeted bullying that we would submit and send that out to the parent, and then log that. And that, in our office, everything's progressive, it doesn't just go 0 to 60, and so we start kind of here, and then we kind of go forward. But that does take a little bit of time, but I think specific to what this bill and act now is saying is, you know, just do your due diligence as a school for now until we get further information to notify those parents about what's going on, as well as the student. So more information coming out, I know, I was just in a conference last week, and several schools are kind of scrambling to see what that's going to be.
Sometimes you get the questions, as more and more legislation gets passed, right? There's usually this what they call unfunded mandates. So as the board sees, like, attendance is going down, tardies have gone up, now we have to monitor, like, so something's going to eventually give. I know sometimes people will be like, oh, it's a top-heavy administration, well.
I just think that as a school that relies heavily on social media to promote our activities and to promote ourselves as a school, we need to be equally responsible when these types of things come up.
But I just think we need to be careful about taking responsibility for social media that's not managed or administered by the school. I think we need to be careful from a liability perspective there.
So maybe some education for students on the negative effects of online bullying.
You do a digital citizenship day every year.
So maybe we should take it further than a day.
Well, and I want to do a shout out, because you do have staff that are monitoring stuff, looking for flags already, right? You've, many interventions have already jumped in, and we don't, we don't recognize the work. I don't even know what that looks like, do you have people looking through all these different messages?
Different apps that pick up keywords from anything on the Chromebooks or school-issue devices, the phone is not a school-issue.
So the key piece, I think, for residency is to get some face time with parents.
Yeah.
Directly have a conversation with them, and it's, again, when we are notified of it, is when that whole, that process starts.
But if you let them know it's on the back of the ID, that's very helpful.
Yeah, if it's like an Instagram thing that we have to search for and find, it's really difficult. So it's, we want to advocate to parents, bring that to our attention as soon as you can, and students. See something, say something, we hit, our students really have with that, like, we mean it. And that's why that QR code's on the back of the ID. So it's, once we have that information, we can go forward. If we don't have that information till, like.
A week later, two weeks later.
Or whenever, it's harder to address it, you know, right then and there. So that's going to be our approach, and I know they're dedicated, and I'm dedicated, to make sure that every kid, when they come here, you know, should feel a sense of belonging and feel safe, and that's what we really, you know, we preach, and I think we show as well, so. But we'll continue to, when we hear things like that, it doesn't go unnoticed. And so it's, then it's like, okay, well then, we need to get that message out better, so.
Thanks, Dave, thank you, Alberto, Kara, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, well.
Dave, you're staying, Brendan, you're coming up, sorry about the delay, Tuesday night. Alberto, I like the jacket with the matching handkerchief, good job. Bob, you can give him a rating on that, Bob.
Good night.
All right, second semester engagement report.
It's page 97, is that correct? Same one, the very same report.
96, 97, okay.
96, yeah.
So tonight, our second report is going to provide an overview of the activity and athletic data from this school year. This report highlights data pertaining to extracurricular participation by grade level. We had a very exciting and active year, I would say, for our extracurriculars on campus. The end of the year engagement number came in right below our goal, I thought we were going to hit it the entire year, we just fell shy. So we were right, 69% of students who are participating are engaged in something related to an extracurricular on campus here. Our board goal is 70%. This number represents, again, kids participating in activities, sport, and this number is up 4% from the previous school year, which is strongly correlates with the number of engaging opportunities on campus and the dedicated staff members that are leading this program. And that goes beyond the school year, you know, you look at the fields right now and all the kids that are here at the camps, and then even, I know there's a nice article about it. and then even, I know there's a nice article about our ecology club and planting some milkweed in Riverside, things like that. The phenomenal opportunities that our, our staff does and it goes beyond to, to provide those, you know, places and outlets for our kids is amazing. So.
I do have a quick question on this. Is this a consistent, I mean, freshmen come in very eager, they're at seventy-six percent and then it goes down to sixty percent for seniors? Is that a consistent trend?
It is, and I think it's somewhat kind of funneled in because they reached that peak where there is some cut, sees a cut sports and, and things like that. So those numbers die off. So you may see larger numbers on like, I don't know, specific sport their freshman year, but then that goes down when you can only take fifteen or twelve on a varsity team.
I would also assume age and working would impact that.
Family obligations.
And then my other question is, you do not count classes like choir, rock band as activities outside of school, right? Because that's a class, that's a requirement.
Correct.
Required.
Orchosis is.
Right, acapella, those ones that are after, but, and musical, but rock band, chamber choir.
Correct.
Those are not part of this.
Correct. Marching band.
Yeah.
And then, and we saw these numbers up there too, so.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good point of clarification, though.
The, the second chart in this report looks at participation by grade level and we're really excited again to see the, you know, the healthy engagement numbers. To your point, freshman this year, you know, seventy-six percent, it's really great. Last year, we were a little bit lower than that, so we're excited that they're off and running. Sophomore class, seventy percent, juniors, sixty-eight, which is really good. So if we can keep that consistent, then I think that, you know, we're well on our way for hitting our goal for next year. And then, you know, senior class participation, I believe it was in the fifties last year, so coming up a little bit at sixty percent for our seniors that just graduated is good. So we'll continue to, to work on connecting our older students with opportunities here on campus going forward for next year. And then moving to the last chart at, at the bottom of the page, it identifies specific extracurricular participation. So we had two hundred and forty-four students solely participating in an activity, three hundred and fourteen students participated both a sport and activity. And then the number that I really look at is the five twenty-five that did not participate in anything on campus, whether it's a sport or activity. And this chart, we did a little bit different this year because I just wanted to, it was a little confusing in prior years, but I just wanted to put it into three different categories there, or four total with the combined activity and sport. But the five twenty-five are the, the spots that we really need to, those students we need to connect with.
And I would almost say hit the soph, like hit the freshmen and sophomores because you have more time. Like I know parents that have gone to their freshman that are like, okay, next year you have to join an activity, you know? And so that's really when you can, maybe they'll find something they were too scared their freshman year, it was too much of a transition, who knows what their reason was, but.
Yeah, and.
Juniors, it might be a little too late.
What we've seen too is the, you know, you empower students to connect with others, it takes off. And so through our student association and our clubs, we do leadership meetings and have them drive like an activity fair and have that solely come from them.
Or bring a friend.
Or what we did in February, we did kind of like a showcase during one of our assemblies and that was one of the best assemblies we ran in my time here because it, it really showed what our hip-hop team, our gymnastics team and all the offerings that we, we have to offer there. So I'll continue to do more of that to, to kind of highlight what we have on campus here.
So quick question on the five twenty-five, do you know, and I don't need to know this, the breakdown of year? Because, and I'm just thinking, out of that number, you may have a higher number of seniors?
It's in the chart.
It's in the chart.
Of the five thirty-nine?
Yeah, just by engagement.
You could check four twenty-one minus two fifty-three and you'll find out how many seniors didn't participate, right?
Yep.
So it's, you know, percent, because if your sport is cut or you're, you know, you're going around looking at colleges, you know, I don't know, you start to drop off.
Correct. I hear you. And just before I kick it to Brendan, we're really excited just for some activities that popped up this year and kind of key in the board on what that process looks like, students or sponsors, they come to me and it happens quite often that, hey, I want to start this club. And so there is a process where like, okay, we'll get twenty-five or thirty signatures, have your mission statement there, what's your purpose, what are you meeting, how is this going to kind of work and can we kind of do this together? Is it, is it going to fit with what, what we have here? Typically never say no, but it is, they do have to find their sponsor and the sponsor has to take that as a volunteer activity for a couple of years. And what we saw this year was sponsors that drove programs to kind of flourish. And so one of those was bowling and that came up and that saw consistent attendance throughout the year. We saw forties, fifties, and which was really cool, we had kind of like a leadership activity night there where even the admin came out and bowled against like the Special Olympics team or different sport activities came out and competed against the bowling team, things like that. So that was really fun. Coffee and tea clubs started up and then cybersecurity was something that's really neat that, that kind of came off and developed from an idea that one of our teachers had. And so we had a couple of students that we recognized at the last board meeting that really put a lot of time in and were awarded a phenomenal scholarship to an online program for the summer. So anytime we can provide opportunities for kids, we're all for it and we're glad to see that that's continuing here and it did last year.
Do those numbers, are they included in the participation and?
They are.
They are, okay.
Brendan?
Great. Transition to athletics, the spring season participation report. Excuse me. The spring sports athletic programs experienced a fourteen percent increase with sixty-five more student athletes compared to last spring. We had five hundred and forty athletes participate in spring sports. This is the highest number of athletes who have participated in a spring sport going back to fourteen years. That's as far back as my records go, so certainly a significant number. Seven of the twelve spring sports saw an increase in participants with boys' track and field and girls' soccer seeing the highest spikes in increased participation. It also should be noted that we had one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight total participants, can include multi-sport athletes this past school year. Again, this is the highest number of participants this school has seen in over fourteen years. So certainly trending in the right direction in terms of participation in an athletic venue. The spring season recap, we had a great athletic season this past spring. Some of our highlights were the following items. Batminton increased their participant number by ten student athletes and provided three levels of competition. Baseball had a twenty-plus win season and competed in the regional championship game. The boys' JV lacrosse team posted a ten-six win-loss record and looked to return several, several athletes on the varsity level next year. The girls' lacrosse team will return ninety-five percent of their roster as lone class of 2023 senior player Ava Reagan heads to Chapman University next year to play women's lacrosse. Girls' soccer won multiple tournaments in electrifying fashion this year and also made it to the regional championship game. Softball registered nineteen victories on the season on their way to earning a runner-up finish in the Metro Suburban Conference as well as a regional championship game appearance. Boys' tennis registered fourteen victories with a signature win over Willowbrook High School, which improved their standings heading into the postseason. Over half of the girls on the, half the girls on the girls' track and field varsity team earned all academic honors while securing a first-place finish in the Leiden High School Invitational and obtaining runner-up honors in the conference. Boys' track and field once again won another conference championship and advanced several athletes to the state championship meet, which we recognized earlier tonight. The boys' volleyball program registered twenty-three victories on the year and earned the boys' volleyball, the first school, first time in history that the boys' volleyball team won a conference championship. So congratulations to Coach Bonnerigo and his team. Ninety-three percent of the girls' water polo athletes earned all academic honors under the guidance of first-year coach Amy Frye. And the boys' water polo team once again registered a postseason victory over Brother Rice High School in the sectional tournament. As I stated earlier, it was a great spring season, which wrapped up a remarkable school year for Bulldog Athletics. A quick look at the athletic school year according to our numbers show that we had three hundred and ninety-four student athletes earned all academic honors. A hundred and fourteen student athletes increase in participation, thirty-three state competition qualifying athletes, seven conference championships, six conference runner-up championship teams and one state championship team. And one big step towards securing a perfectly suited fit for all of our student athletes in terms of the landscape of our conference as we move into the next year and the years beyond. I know that is a lot of information I provided, the numerous accomplishments the athletic department has experienced, doesn't happen without the contributions of our coaches, our remarkable student athletes, the athletic training team, events, staff workers and more. All in all, it was an outstanding year, is one that I'll remember for a long time. I would also like to give thanks to Tom Dolman, Assistant Athletic Director, Mark Ori. Special thanks to Assistant Athletic Director Sandy Chaika for her unwavering support of the athletic program. And very special thanks to Administrative Assistant Donna Sifferman on a great year.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you very much.
I have a comment. Just for the winter, are you going to have to separate boys and girls wrestling as that becomes more, I know that, no? Okay.
We did have two separate head coaches last year. They did kind of fall under the same umbrella. I think the IHSA is trending in that direction where they're going to keep them separate, if you will.
Okay.
The girls' programs are just taking off relatively quickly.
Okay.
Thank you, Brendan. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Kylie, principals' report. Aren't you glad you stepped in tonight?
Yes.
Thank Dr. Freitas.
Yes, I am happy to present the principals' report on behalf of Hector. I will not bark. Please do not expect that. Yes. So for the month of June, summer school and our summer athletic camps are well underway. Great and smooth start to summer school, I attribute mostly to the summer school director, who is me. Dave Mannan's favorite thing to do was hand me that summer school folder. We have several courses being offered in credit recovery and we have courses for advancement running in health and US Gov and students who are here taking drivers ed as well. Summer camps are also in full swing, which you can notice if you drive by at any point of the day. We met with the partner school principals the other day and one of them said, wow, it's a lot busier over here than it is in our district right now. So there's a lot of energy in the building with students going to athletic camps, exploring academic workshops and participating in summer school. Coming up in June, June nineteenth is a non-attendance day and federal holiday and observance of Juneteenth. Some other important notes about the month of June, there are several remodeling projects going on at RB, so we continue to urge visitors, students and families to be aware and to be patient. We had the crane out there on Monday, that makes for a, a slow start with one lane going down Gulf. That is happening again on June twentieth. We will have a crane out on June twentieth again, so we're making sure that our campers and our summer school participants are aware of that and are safe as Gulf goes down to one road, or one-lane road. Dr. Freitas wanted to express his gratitude to all participants of the commencement for the class of 2023, board members in attendance, administrators, teachers, faculty and staff. We heard this evening mention of great music performances, great speeches by our graduates and it's always a wonderful event that families love to celebrate. There's a lot of work especially that goes into that ceremony. Dave and his team managing the security and putting all of the logistics of that together. And it was, as always, a great ceremony. So we are thankful to everyone who participated in that. Our summer graduation will take place on July eleventh at six-thirty in this room, room 201, the Lahatsky Room. That is before the July board meeting. That summer graduation takes place every year. Also, some important notes about residency. July ninth is the deadline for parents or guardians to submit all of their residency forms online. So we encourage all of our families, if they have not done so already, to start that process and complete that process by July ninth. Our residency events begin on July twelfth. We have four residency events over the course of the summer. July twelfth, we will be here from eight to three PM. July nineteenth, we will be here from eleven to seven PM. July twenty-sixth, eleven to seven PM. And August second, eight until two PM. Dave always makes sure to stagger those for people who work different hours so that families can come in and go through the residency process. This is where students have an opportunity to get their schedules, they have their school photos taken. So this is an important event and we encourage families to come in for those pieces of residency. That is all that Dr. Freitas has in his report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
On behalf of Dr. Freitas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lundus. You're welcome to stay. I don't think, I looked through the agenda.
I don't.
I don't think there's anything that directly related to the board. I need to make sure Ms., Dr. Smetana is still attached there. She's going to have a budget coming up here. Ms. Smetana, if you're still awake, you're going to be coming up soon, so if you hear me. But I think Kylie, if you want.
I'm here.
You can, you can go or you can stay, Kylie. It's your choice.
You know what? I will go ahead and take leave.
Okay.
No.
Thank you very much.
Don't look back.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help today.
Of course. Thanks. Happy to help.
Dave, thank you for waiting.
Aw, Davey. He's still here.
So on consent agenda, didn't you have any questions? Could we go ahead and get a motion on that, please?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on May ninth and twenty-three, 2023, open and closed as presented in the June thirteenth, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second by Bill Durkin.
I actually have a question on this one, I want to make sure that we're being clear. Approval of minutes on what she just read differs from what's on the agenda as posted. Do you see what I'm looking at? She read May ninth and May twenty-third and we also have the, we included in there the special meeting and proclamation of the April fourth, 2023 consolidate. But that was not part of her motion. I just want to make sure that we're being comprehensive here. The minute should include the April fourth consolidated election and organization of new board. That was in the packet, but it, it was not on the script. The May ninth regular meeting, open and closed, committee of the whole, May twenty-third, open and closed.
Should I read it again?
Yeah, can you just, make sure you just read it off of what's on the actual agenda?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves special meeting and proclamation of results of the April fourth, 2023 consolidated election and organization of new Board of Education and regular meeting, May ninth, 2023. Regular meeting, closed session, May ninth, 2023. Committee of the whole and special meeting, May twenty-three, 2023. Committee of the whole and special meeting, closed session, May twenty-three, 2023. As presented in the June thirteenth, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Durkin, all in favor.
Aye.
Sorry about the confusion there, everyone. I apologize. Bold business action items.
No update on life safety, project's underway. You heard us talk about it tonight, the facility update in the superintendent report.
So we can move on to Dr. Smetana's tentative budget for FY 2024.
Dr. Smetana, you ready?
Yes. Included in the board packet is the second draft of the tentative budget for fiscal year 24. This is the second read of the tentative budget and the general summary of revenues and expenditures has been reviewed by the Finance Advisory Council on May nineteenth. The actuals for revenue and expenditure are now reported as of May thirty-first. And before the July board meeting, if we get the information from the Township Treasurer in time due to the July fourth holiday, we will update the June thirtieth actuals into the tentative budget and try to make any necessary changes in order to present to the board. If not, that will be done and presented at the August meeting. I would ask that the tentative budget be approved tonight for public review, which means if it's approved tonight, tomorrow we will post it on our website. The budget will be reviewed again at the July and August board meetings before we ask the board to formally adopt the official budget in September. There's a very small projected surplus due to updating the budget based on May thirtieth, May thirty-first actuals. Finally, tonight I wanted to point out there are two big things that won't come in until August, which is evidence-based funding estimate for the year and CPPRT. Those are two big things that could significantly impact the budget that aren't released until August. And then potentially, as we previously discussed tonight, property taxes from this year, if we don't get them in June, could trickle into next year, which on a cash basis would affect our budget. And then finally, you know, as we get closer to the school year in August, we'll have a clearer picture on special education. Right now, we have a pretty good sense, but we get often transfers that move in. So those are the big items that I'm aware of that significantly influence the final budget one way or another in the next two months.
And there were no questions submitted. I did not see any on my questions that I submitted to the board. So could we get a motion to approve the tentative budget?
We need a vote on that, and I think we should wait for our president, right? Because it's our 30 seconds. We just need 30 seconds, Kristin.
She's here. No, she's here.
We have to take a vote on approving the tentative budget.
Yeah, we're waiting for you.
I thought there were big questions or comments or discussion.
Well, no, because.
None were submitted.
It's still, we got a month.
Okay. I apologize.
No, no, no worries.
Causing all kinds of challenges here.
To the right.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the tentative budget for FY '24 as presented in the June 13, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Durkin. Now, would you need a roll call?
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruskow?
Yes.
Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
And Miss Salas?
Yes.
Kristin, I believe you have the next agenda item as well, the transportation contract?
Correct. There were no questions and no changes since the last board meeting, but this is a one-year contract with First Student, which provides transportation services for athletics and field trips and activities outside of the school day. This is a one-year extension, as that's the maximum time allowed by state statute. And, you know, unfortunately, this is the best situation, given the current state of economics. We're still experiencing a bus driver shortage and also higher gas prices. And so, as you can see outlined in the chart, you know, the cost is going up a little bit, but it's still the cheapest option for the district at this time.
And there were no, we did discuss this at the last meeting, there were no additional questions?
No additional requests.
Okay. So can we move ahead?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the one-year extension agreement with First Student Contract for Transportation for Field Trips and Athletics as presented in the June 13, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Durkin. And we need a roll call.
Ms. Ruskow?
Yes.
Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes. Under new business payment of bills, I don't believe there were any questions submitted there.
Kristin, anything you want to point out?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the June 13, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second from Ms. Locke with a roll call.
Ms. Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruskow?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes. Is this a first read, or are we looking for approval on the IGA?
Kristin, the IGA brief update just relates to reimbursement on Medicare?
Sure. I'll answer the question first. Unfortunately, we do need approval on this IGA. We received it on May 19, and it needs to be approved and submitted by June 30. So this IGA is part of our Medicaid claims. So the district participates in the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services School-based Health Services Program, and in order to do so, we need to approve this IGA. The program allows the district to claim reimbursement for special education students to qualify for the Illinois Medical Assistance Program. And so we are able to claim certain costs and some reimbursement for administrative functions as well. So usually this brings about $20,000 in revenue for the district, depending on the year and the students. And again, this is specifically for special education students, and it's a state program, and the only way to participate is by agreeing to this IGA. The district's council has reviewed the attached IGA and had no concerns. The administration would recommend approving the IGA tonight.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Was it delayed, or does it always come, like, at the last hour like that?
This is not an annual, this is not an annual IGA. This is one that, I believe there were some changes made at the state, and that's what's prompting everyone to have to agree to a new IGA. This is not something that we typically need to do on an annual basis.
I'm assuming council has reviewed?
Yeah.
It says in there.
Yeah, council reviewed and had no concern.
Just wanted for the record.
So then my question, Kristin, if this is not an annual, then does this just stay in place until they make new updates?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's why we haven't seen it.
Any additional questions or comments? I think we need to move forward tonight.
Okay.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the IGA with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services as presented in the June 13, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Novak. We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruskow?
Yes.
Slapp?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Facility rental agreement, this is approved by the board every June. I think we discussed this with the facility advisory council, the only updates were to some of the late fees. We need the board to take action on this tonight, so that anybody starting to rent their facility July 1 and beyond, we can use this new agreement.
There were no questions submitted. Any questions this evening from anyone? No? Okay.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the facility use agreement as presented in the June 13, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second from Ms. Locke.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruskow?
Yes.
Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
And Ms. Salas?
Yes. We did skip press policy issue 112.
First read.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're recognizing it on the agenda.
Schedule the summary, schedule the group sometime this summer.
Okay. Pole vault mats, pole vault mats.
Kristin, pole vault mat, this is one of your new big, larger purchases. Does this need to be approved tonight, or is this a first read?
It's, ah, needs to be approved tonight. I called it to the attention of the board at the May 23 board meeting in my report. This is also discussed with the Finance Advisory Council on May 19. But the thought behind this is that obviously the pole vault mats need to be replaced, but assuming that we receive some property tax revenue in June, we'll have an influx of additional money, and this would be one way to spend it, as well as address the needs of the district. Due to the cost, we received three quotes and would recommend going with Ritchie Athletics, as we've used them several times in the past. They're also the lowest quote, and this is below the bid threshold.
Okay. So this would only be spent if we have the surplus?
No, I think it's indicating we spend it regardless.
We spend it regardless, because we are planning on a surplus for this year. But remember, we brought it up that the cow just said.
Right. I just.
Be safer to probably do it this year.
So we would have, we have the funding set aside regardless of the remaining property tax revenues. Okay.
Motion?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, oh, sorry, no, Cook County, Illinois approves the purchase of pole vault mats through Ritchie Athletics, $24,625, as presented in the June 13, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
I'll second. Second, Nick Novak.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruskow?
Yes.
Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes. Security system.
Kristin, same thing, correct? We discussed this last week. This is the additional camera footage, or cameras?
Correct.
Were there any additional questions submitted? I know we talked about it at the last meeting.
And we want to put this this year and use the money this year, right? These are the ones we've been discussing.
So she's seeking approval tonight.
Okay.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the purchase of a security camera system through Skynet Security as presented in the June 13, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second from Ms. Locke. We need a roll call.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruskow?
Yes.
Ms. Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
And Ms. Salas?
Yes. Did you see their statement, seeing no one here remaining this evening? No discussion items requested? Consideration of items for future meetings from any member of the board?
Yes, and I don't think we can do it next meeting, but, and I'm going to put this out to the board, and you discussed it, there's new legislation coming. There's third-party apps that students use on their social media. I know our deans are monitoring flag words. So somehow, maybe we can be informed, have a, you know, maybe somebody on the administrative team can kind of enlighten us how they are handling, you've got Snapchat, you've got Instagram, you've got all kinds of stuff, and then tie it back. And I don't even think we can do it in just one quick little presentation, but to kind of start to open up this conversation, this senior thing, I, you know, that was kind of the first time I've heard about this senior confessions thing. I've had four kids graduate, and I've never heard of that. So I think something for the future, let administration, you know, my thought is let administration kind of think about what's a thoughtful way to kind of start to, start a conversation with us and moving forward, and what's out there, what we could do or doing, you know?
Yeah, and maybe it's helpful for us to get a copy of the social media presentation that takes place.
Yeah.
And maybe that's a place to start. I don't know. I think I would defer to Kevin and team as to what.
Yeah, to bring it back to your team, or let them talk about, you know, it's big. It's big in every high school, it's big in the country. I think we need to start talking about.
Well, we obviously have the litigation we've been talking about as well.
That too, right.
And that relates to it. So I think, I think we've had some of that discussion, and I would be concerned about dealing with any specific instance because of liability purposes. But I think in general terms, it's something that obviously the team is familiar with, and we should.
I would think probably maybe at the August or September, I don't think the deans are back until the first or second week of August. They're only on a 10-month contract, so just sometime in the early start of the next school year.
Yeah, and, you know, I think it should be thoughtful. I don't think it's a one-and-done. I mean, I think it's something, you kick back to the team and let them think about, because not only will we get knowledge, but then the community, you know, I think it's bigger than we realize, and so.
Okay. Very good. Matters for closed session include appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, school safety, confidentiality of closed session minutes. Do we have a motion?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the June 13, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second from Ms. Locke.
Ms. Ruskow?
Yes.
Ms. Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
And Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
And Ms. Salas?
Yes. Okay.